And we are going to call role Katie at the beginning of the regular meeting. Or do you want to take role at the beginning of the regular meeting? We'll begin with the study session. Agenda Bill 4863, Development Services Cost of Service and Cost Recovery Fee Analysis. Scott Greenberg.
You're on. Oh, wrong one, sorry.
I'm on. There we go. Okay, perfect. We are here tonight, this great group in front of you, to present a new Development Services Cost of Service and Cost Recovery Fee Analysis. Henceforth, we'll talk about that as the fee study, so we don't have to use that long title each time we talk about it. This is actually the fourth review of cost recovery from development services fee that the city has done in the past 14 years. And the council's policy since at least the mid 2000s has been to try to recover full costs on all direct permitting activity and appropriate indirect costs. So all recoverable costs, council policy is the target or the goal is full cost recovery. Following a presentation of the new study and council discussion, staff is seeking your direction on a future updated fee resolution that we will bring to you sometime this fall. We hired the FCS group to prepare the study. They also did the study from 2006. To my left is Peter Moy and Nathan Reese. That's Peter Moy on the left, Nathan next to him, from FCS Group, who will present the study and its findings. After their presentation, I'll come back to the microphone and tee up some questions and considerations for council discussion, and then talk about the next steps. So at this point, I'll turn it over to Peter.
Okay, thank you, Scott. Nathan's going to sort of be up there on the podium, because he's going to do most of the talking. But what I'd like to just go over is sort of what we're going to talk about in the presentation. And basically, we've got a few study goals. We'll go over the methodology, what kinds of services are included in the study, and then really the cost of service and cost recovery results, and then maybe how you can use the results from this study. And then we'll answer any questions, both after the presentation or as you go along, as you discuss some of the issues that Scott brings up. So in terms of the study goals, basically, our task was to identify the 2012 cost of service for the Development Services Group and its major functions. And then also, once we knew what the cost of service is, then look at the revenues and determine what your cost recovery levels are for the different areas. And so with that, I will let Nathan go and explain to you how we arrived at all these numbers and everything else. So Nathan?
Sure.
Okay. Am I on? Okay.
Oh, there I am. All right. Thanks, Peter. So just to get started, we'll do a brief overview of how we actually did the study. When we look at doing a cost of service study, the first thing we're going to do is try to find the cost. And so as we went through, we identified different types of costs, labor costs, non-labor costs, and took a look and saw whether or not they were appropriate to include as part of development services and the permit type of services that they're providing. Now, our cost of service analysis is driven by staff time. It's driven by how much time staff are spending on different activities, be they, you know, a specific permit or something that we could consider to be an overhead activity, like answering email, attending meetings, general kind of overhead stuff. So what we do with those time estimates and the time information is we go through and we identify how much time was spent on permitting activities versus kind of overhead support activities for permitting, general overhead activities, and then on other types of activities in the department. We go through and we identify the time for everybody, and we identify the costs for everyone, and we come up with rates, basically, so that we can say, you know, X planner's time is worth X dollars. And so for this type of permit, we figure how many hours are we working on that year, and then we can come to the conclusion about how much that permit costs. So when we're going through and looking at different types of costs, you know, we like to put them in different types of buckets. We look at the direct services. And so that is at a planner, for example, spending time on a permit. And so that would be what we'd consider to be a direct service, because they're working directly on a fee service for a particular customer. Then we have another bucket, which we call indirect services. These are the things that are associated with fee services, but they're not directly related to a particular fee or service. So if people are working at the permit counter, if you come in and you're a developer and you want to pay for a permit, the people working at that permit desk, they don't track their time to the level where you could say, you know, they worked on their specific permit versus that specific permit. They're going to be working on a broad variety of permits. So we take that cost, and we're going to spread it across all the different permit services, so that it can be included there. But we don't want to spend the time or don't have enough information to identify a particular permit for that. Then we have department overhead. So that's department managers and other people who are associated with administrative assistance. Those kind of people, you know, they administer the department, they help support everyone in their services, both the services that support fee services and also other services like long-range planning and other things that people in the department perform. And so we take their costs and we spread it out across everyone's time. And then we also, in this study, were able to include some costs for citywide overhead. And citywide overhead, you are actually a pretty good example of citywide overhead.
We're pretty young.
Yeah. Sorry. So but as part of the 2012 budget, the city's finance department put together an overhead analysis and basically an overhead cost plan. And so we use that as the basis of determining how much overhead costs could be attributed to DSG. So we have all these different layers of costs. We have this direct layer of costs, which supports that fees or permits directly, and we have staff time data supporting that. We have indirect services that help support those permits and fees, and we have time data that supports that. We have department overhead, time data supports that, and then citywide overhead, which is just a cost. Once we've identified all these costs, we're going to take it and we're going to build it back into different land use and permitting services. So we've identified three major service types. We've got building services. So those are all things related to building permits and building inspections, including your electrical inspections, mechanical inspections, plumbing inspections. So that's one category of costs. Then we have planning services. Planning services are kind of your land use-related permits and fees, conditional use permits, subdivisions, other things that are related to critical areas, all those things that are done by your planning department. And then we have engineering services. These are related to development review, when engineers go in and take a look at how the sewer or the water hookups are and how they're going to connect in the system and different kind of impacts. So once we've identified all the costs, we have all these different cost layers, we're able to go out and based on staff time, we're able to figure out how much it costs to provide building services, planning services, and engineering services. And these are a compilation of everyone's staff time, so it's very accurate as far as our ability to say, hey, we know how much building services cost, because we really know how much time staff spent doing building services or planning services or engineering. As part of this analysis, we also identify some other costs for other services that aren't related to your permits and fees. That includes things like long-range planning, like I mentioned before, other transportation planning, and other, I think the Green Ribbon Commission kind of sustainability review, those different kinds of things. So once we've gone through and identified all the costs, like Peter mentioned, we're able to figure out how much people pay for all these services based on your revenue information, and we can figure out the cost recovery for each one of these different services. So we'll take the total revenue that you got from building permits, for example, and we can compare it to the cost for your building services, and all of a sudden, we have that kind of cost recovery rate that was mentioned at the beginning. So we included a lot of different services in this study. This is just a quick list. If you'd like to ask any questions about these, we can. But we've got different building services, engineering services, in the next slide. We go through all the different kind of planned services. So this list describes all the different fee services and activities that we analyze, and these are the services that will be included in our costs, in our cost recovery analysis. So the first look at our numbers, basically, we have a total cost for DSG's permitting services of a little over $2 million. Of that, 61% was for building, 17% was for engineering, and 22% was for planning. And just for information, we've also included a little table from the report here, and you can see kind of how those costs break down into direct costs, indirect costs, and overhead So overall, cost recovery for DSG for 2012, we had a little over $2 million in costs. And those costs consist of direct costs, about 43%, indirect costs, which were about a quarter, department or division overhead for DSG, which is 17%, and then those citywide overhead costs that I mentioned were 13%. So a total of $2 million. And when we took a look at the revenues that were associated with permitting services, we were able to identify about $1.4, $1.5 million in revenues. So overall cost recovery for permitting services, different development fee-related services for DSG is about 70% right now. So that's kind of a general overview. But when we dig into the weeds, talking about building, planning, and engineering, we do have some differences. So for building services, when we did our cost-
Nathan, can I-
Yes.
So I had talked to Noel about this earlier today, and I just want to clarify, if you could go back one slide.
Sure.
On page two of our agenda bill, there's a eligible for cost recovery versus not eligible for cost recovery-
Yes.
-portion here. What you're showing here is everything eligible and ineligible, or are you showing only the eligible? Are we only operating within the realm of the eligible stuff?
We have moved to only eligible costs at this point.
Okay, okay. So everything else has been set aside?
That's correct. Yeah, and one of the slides in the presentation, we actually touch on those ineligible costs.
Okay.
Because we were able to identify the overall cost of that as part of the study.
Okay, thank you.
Sure, no problem. All right, any other questions up to this point? All right. So moving into more of the details, when we did our cost of service study, not only were we able to identify the direct, indirect, and overhead types, we can also identify the total cost for different services based on staff time keeping information. So for building services, the overall cost was $1.2 million, $1.3 million. Of that, 88% of that cost was for building permit-related plan review and inspection. So that includes your building permit work, the actual plan review work, the inspection work, and then all of your, what is referred to as subtrades, so that would be the mechanical, the plumbing, the electrical. That was about $1.1 million of the overall cost of building services in 2012. There was also fire plan review and inspection for about $125,000. That was about 10% of the overall cost. And then a small amount for pre-application meetings, about $30,000 or 2% of the overall. So if you're thinking about time and cost, that building service is spending, the most time is being spent on building permits. And then we have about 10% of the time working on fire plan review and inspection, and then a small amount of time in pre-application meetings.
Maybe you said this earlier, just so I understand this. When you're, on the indirect costs, is that actually allocating indirect costs, or it is, allocation's the wrong word. Normally, when you use the word indirect costs or overhead, you take a percentage and you allocate it just based on that percentage. You don't actually go in. By definition, an indirect cost is not something that you can actually attribute to a specific activity, and the same with overhead.
Sure.
So you end up taking some formula and saying that our direct costs are, 30% of our direct costs are here, and 40% are there, and 30% are there, and so we'll allocate our indirect and overhead 30, 40, 30. Is that not what you did, or is that what you did, or?
Our allocation of indirect costs is based on direct hours, so-
Okay, so they're not really indirect costs, then?
No, well, the costs are, I think the next slide will sort of explain that, so go to the next slide.
Sure, no problem.
So you can see, when we put all the, together all those other costs again, that we have, what we called in those buckets earlier that we had talked about, the direct costs, which are those, that time and effort that's being spent working specifically on that permit. We have those indirect costs, which are allocated to the different services, because we don't know which ones to spread them to, so we use direct hours as a means to allocate those costs to planning, engineering, and all the other services. Same with the division, department overhead, as well as citywide overhead. So there's a large group of costs, mostly anything that's not direct, that gets allocated to the different services.
Based on the relative amount of the direct costs?
Yes, direct costs.
Direct hours.
We use direct hours.
We use direct hours.
As opposed to cost.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Go ahead on this one.
Great, thank you. So looking at building, then, the overall cost recovery was 87%. So we had $1.2, $1.3 million in costs, of which about half was the direct cost, a quarter was indirect, and then 15%, 14% for the division overhead, and 13% for citywide overhead. Fee revenues were $1.1 million. And so cost recovery for 2012 was almost 90%. And if you want to think about it from a policy perspective, like was mentioned at the beginning, building has been able to cover both its direct and indirect costs and most of its overhead. In fact, I think it's pretty much a wash there, with only the citywide overhead not covered.
So for example, Scott's salary would be part of indirect, and Noel's salary would be part of citywide overhead? Or Scott's salary would be part of division, direct, department, division overhead, or?
Yes.
That's correct. Scott would be part of division, department overhead, and then a very small portion of your salaries would be part of that citywide overhead.
I don't know whether you would include.
Yeah, they would.
I can't even see it, it's that small.
It's just, you know, it's a diet slice of pizza, basically.
That citywide overhead also includes finance and-
Yeah, human personnel.
Personnel and all those others.
You mean that the, like, Chip's big salary?
Yeah, yeah. We had a hard time squeezing that in this slide. All right, moving on to planning services. So for planning services, we identified, again, the overall cost of $456,000. There are lots more categories in planning, because planning typically has a lot more different kinds of activities, the variety of permits and other regulatory activities they participate in is pretty broad. But just going through, about a quarter was for zoning CIPA or conditional use permit. Design review took up about 20%, so $88,000. Variances and deviations, $84,000 or about 20%. Shoreline permit review, about 15%, $65,000. Subdivisions, 13% at $60,000. And then pre-application meetings, again, a small amount of about 5%. And accessory dwelling unit permits, about 5%. So when we break that down and compare it to revenues, the total cost, again, for planning was $456,000. About 37% was the direct, 31% was indirect, 18% was for department, division overhead, and 14% for citywide overhead. And total revenues for 2012 were $178,000, so our cost recovery is a little below 40%. So 39% cost recovery. So planning and building have different costs, the composition's a little bit different, and the cost recovery is certainly different.
How do you, just curious, it's like someone like Noel's salary or Richard's salary, city manager, how would, what percentage of that would you allocate to DSG versus, you know, maintenance and all this other stuff? How do you figure that out?
Well, generally, there's, for most cities, and I'll let Chip go into more detail, but there's what's called a cost allocation plan that allocates all those different costs to the utilities, to all the different funds, to all the different types of services, but...
Yeah, for the record, Chip Quarter, finance director. So we overhauled what's called our citywide overhead charge model back in 2010 to take effect in '11 and '12. It's a fairly sophisticated model that Francie worked on, and you're just taking, you have multiple, different kinds of bases of allocation where appropriate. For example, we like to use agenda bills whenever we're allocating a chunk of Katie's time, or even a chunk of a city manager's time, as a quick example. But there's multiple bases of allocation that we use to finance this completely different basis of allocation. That's appropriate for each layer.
So basically, you gave them the percentage to allocate to DSG?
I gave it to them. We did the analysis internally.
Okay.
Yep.
I have a follow-up on that. So, I mean, we've done, I remember doing the analysis for a while.
Excuse me, who are you?
I'm sorry?
Who are you?
Grizzly Adams.
For those who don't know, Mike's here with a beard for the first time, so.
That's wonderful.
Thank you. So, I mean, we've done this process of capturing the full burdened cost of staff and admin for DSG for a while, and I'm so surprised when I went through this packet in the study to see a 39% cost recovery. I mean, how did we go from 94, 96%?
79, it's not 39.
What's that?
It's at 70-something now.
In this case.
You got to be careful, because you have overall cost recovery for the department,
and then you have cost recovery for each of its major segments, building, planning, engineering services, and there's nothing for other direct services. So what you're familiar with is the overall cost of recovery. I mean, sorry, the 94.1 that he's referring to is, that was actually building services, wasn't it?
That, I think that-
Was it overall?
That was overall from several years ago, before council directed staff to include more overhead, which dropped it to 88.5%.
Yeah, that's right.
But this is just the planning services, and I don't recall what it was back in 2009 at the last study, but it was very similar to that number.
Follow on to the previous one, based on allocation. So is the allocation then based on a snapshot in time, or would you say that the allocation that you're using is going to be consistent 2013, 2014, 2015? If you're using things like agenda bills and all, it would imply that there's a shift in proportionality year to year, depending on what's on the council's agenda.
Right, as it relates to citywide overhead costs, we take, we don't do just one year. Typically, we usually use a couple of years to try to reflect the ebb and flow of stuff.
Okay, so two, three years?
But this, this particular, okay, in terms of, this is looking at 2012 DSG activity, and we'll get into that a little bit later, there is some ebb and flow. This is a snapshot in time, but in terms of citywide overhead, no, that reflects a, what I would call a period, that extends more than a year, usually two years, assessment, analysis.
That's great, thanks.
Okay, thank you. So we have talked about overall cost recovery, we've talked about building cost recovery, this is planning cost recovery, and now we're going to move on to engineering services. So first of all, we'll talk about the cost for engineering. For 2012, we identified $350,000, $351,000 in costs. The majority of that was for storm review, storm drain review and inspection. It was 40%, 41%, and $143,000. Right-of-way use takes second place. We had 26% of that, almost $93,000. Then site development review and inspection for $76,000 at 22%. And then pre-application meetings, 11%. And it was a little bit higher than the others, but remember, the total cost for engineering services is a little bit smaller than everyone else, so that's why it looks a little bigger. And moving on to cost recovery results for engineering, we had total cost recovery a little bit below 50% based on our study. So total revenues were $169,000, $170,000 for 2012, and total costs, $350,000, and again, direct made up about 40%, indirect 26%, department overhead 25%, and then citywide overhead at 9%. And the citywide overhead's a little bit smaller, just based on the way that the city did its allocation, so. And also, here we have the other direct services. So the total cost for other direct services was $276,000. And we just have it broken down by the type of costs, direct, citywide overhead, and department overhead. There's no indirect costs here, because our indirect costs were related with permitting and fee services, so we wouldn't have any here for these other direct services. And these costs represent code enforcement, long-range planning, transportation planning, sustainability activities, and other things. So because these services aren't really related to development, we haven't included them with the cost of development, so they're not included with, when we do our cost recovery analysis, so. All right, so now that we know our cost recovery levels, and we can take a look and see, you know, how much of the costs you're recovering, we can move on to talk about how we can use, or you can use, rather, the study results that we provided you. So if you choose to make adjustments to fees, this information is very useful. You can use specific cost recovery levels for each type of service. So for example, if you wanted buildings' costs to be covered by revenues and make it, like, let's say, a 75% cost recovery level, you could make adjustments to your fees, and based on the projected volume that you think you're going to have in the future, you could set fees at a way so that you could cover 75% of the overall cost. You can take a look at the different types of costs. Remember, we had direct costs, indirect costs, department overhead costs, and citywide overhead costs, and you can say, hey, you know, for these kinds of services, we believe that direct costs and indirect costs are related to them, so we can cover those costs, but the department overhead costs and citywide overhead costs would occur regardless, for example, so we don't want to recover those. So instead of picking a fixed percentage point, you could just pick a type of cost that you want to cover, and then set the fees based on that.
Is there any reason one would do that?
There's lots, there's lots of different reasons why, and we have many clients who have chosen one way or chosen the other way. So it really comes down to just a policy decision about different things.
From a legal standpoint, Katie, we can, we're not, we can do 100% or up to 100% cost recovery, and if we have, we can base it upon this analysis that we have in front of us?
As long as you have the analysis to support it, so you're not trying to obviously make a profit off of it.
Right, of course. All right, and you can also, oh, sorry.
I was going to jump in with one caveat there, that other jurisdictions, I think, have run into a little trouble with on the legal front, and that is, if they, if you aim for 100%, and then your volume goes up, you can actually end up collecting more than 100%. And that's where you, so you want to think about some, some amount of cushion to mitigate against maybe some of that potential risk, because the county and some other cities have faced some litigation as a result of that type of problem.
Do you want me to? On some of those, the, it depends on how you account for it, and oftentimes, you will see that the building types of funds especially will get, will exceed their expenses in any one year. Part of that is an accounting thing, because there's a lot of work in progress. So if you had a large builder coming in and they made a payment, you know, December 31st, they're paying basically for work that's going to be all done in the pre, the next year. And so sometimes, when you look at those kinds of things, you have to identify that in some cities, and some of the lawsuits that have occurred, that didn't really, they didn't really do that, so they were challenged on some of those. Other things, too, in some of the suits involved, how, in terms of building funds, how they were using those reserves. If you over-recover, you know, one of the questions would be, oftentimes, are there other kinds of things that would be, that money would be used for? For example, we have some clients that would actually over-recover, but they're collecting money to pay off a permit system, or collect money to get a new permit system, things like that, so. But it all goes back to identifying, really, what's, what is there, and obviously, you don't want to over, continue to over-recover, so, so those are things that, that happen. In terms of building, also, just for the most part, most of the places that we go to, we often see building as being slightly less than 100%, and usually, it's that citywide overhead, because the departments figure out what they need.
Hang on, your microphone seems to have died on you.
Yeah, just-
Sorry about that.
So, you know, that's one, one thing to just keep in mind in terms of how those cost recovery works and other things like that. But oftentimes, certainly for the different types of services, we've seen different types of cost recovery by the different types of services. And I think we'll probably, we may get into that a little bit later.
Okay. Chip wanted to answer this as well.
Just real quick, just for perspective, two things. One, just so you know, I don't treat development-related revenues as a general purpose revenue, meaning like a property tax or sales tax that can fund anything. I can't do that. It's actually directly tied to development services. So Kirsten and Luan, annually, it's actually more frequent than that, but we take a look at our development revenues we've brought in, and to the extent that we've received a revenue and the work hasn't been done on our end, we book it as unearned, meaning it's not a revenue. Until we've actually earned it, the work's actually done. So we do this annual analysis on that. And that helps actually pretty much prevent this over-recovery from happening, by just that simple accounting practice. Second, as it relates to planning services and engineering services, there's a very strong case, and others will talk about this better than I will, that there's a public benefit to certainly, maybe the right way to explain this is on, on the building services, that's primarily for private benefit. So there's a very strong case for seeking full cost recovery on that. On various planning-related services and engineering services, there's usually a strong public benefit component to it, meaning lots of folks don't seek, seek full cost recovery. They're happy to partially subsidize those with taxes because of that public benefit portion. So there's a relationship between public benefit and a tax funding source, private benefit, and where the fee is set.
Debbie?
So going back to the question of over-recovery, is that determined, then, on a per-service basis, or DSG as a whole? So can somebody come in and say, you might be under-recovering on building services, but you're over-recovering on engineering services? Or are they just going to take the department in aggregate?
For the most part, the, some of the lawsuits that, that have occurred are usually related to a very specific service, and as opposed to the whole total. So we're usually talking, like, for example, in building, where there's been mostly, most of the lawsuits-
of the lawsuits have been on building. So that's where they would look and just say, okay, did you collect more money? The law concerning that talks about only recovering the cost for regulating and reviewing and inspecting those types of permits when they talk about building. Planning, there isn't really quite the same issue in terms of over-recovery, because most, there haven't been too many lawsuits that relate to the planning fees, mostly they've been related to the building fees.
Right, but the principle is then that when we look at this, we do actually have to look at it per-service rather than DSG as a whole?
That's right. And then there's always, again, there's, there's a number of factors involved when you talk about whether or not you over-recovered or under-recovered. Primarily, again, when we do these kinds of things, we've taken a point in time that says, okay, we looked at 2012, there was a certain amount of permit activity at that point in time. And if you looked and see what that cost was, we can identify what it cost and how much money you recovered. Going forward, when people are doing their budget, you've also got to start taking into account the, the volume of permits that are going to come in. And that's where some of this, when you talk about maybe not setting the goal, like raising the fees totally by whatever cost recovery we need to, if you think you're going to start having an increase in volume to be able to sort of be on target, you're going to say, okay, well, we, if we're going to do more volume, and we think we can be, cut some of the times down also because you've done other kinds of, you know, improvement, productivity kinds of improvements, then you wouldn't set, you'd do it at a lower percentage.
Anyways, Mayor, Chip, I like what you just said right there, and I hadn't considered that, but I think that's a very relevant philosophy, if you will, going forward. So when I look at page three, table two, eligible cost is about $2 million, and we had a recovery of 70%. And norm, or the last study, we had a recovery of 95%, right? Around 95%?
It depends which prior study you look at. If you look at the one we did when Steve Lancaster was here back in '09, and we're looking at '08 data, and we added some citywide indirect, after we had the citywide indirect, it was 88 and a half. There was a 94.1 number prior to that 88 and a half. That was a target number.
Well, I thought we even, I thought the 94 was closer to us than the 88%. It's the other way around?
Yeah, so for comparison purposes, I prefer the 88 and a half as the one to compare the 70% to.
Okay, well, I read my numbers just here using the 95%, so bear with me right here. So, so the difference between, if we had recovered at 95% that $2 million, that would have been additional revenue of $500,000. So that means that if we accept, if we increase the cost recovery, that, or I should say, that $500,000 was coming from where? That $500,000 is coming from the general fund, right?
Uh huh.
And the concern that I, the concern that I have is that we're using this exercise as a way to just, to move expenses from the general fund to this area, in which should have been in the general fund, should, should have remained in the general fund. You know, it's, it's the old janky thing of gutting the, the general fund of more and more expenses.
I don't think we're at that point in the discussion yet. I think we're still getting the study presented to us.
Yeah, let's, Nathan, I'm thinking you're close to the end of this, but if you're not, would...
No, pretty much, we've, I do enjoy standing here, but we've, we've pretty much hit, you know, the last point, and then we just had questions, so. Your instincts were very good, and I think I'll just turn it over. Just point if that's okay.
So if there's questions about the study in particular, that's great. Scott's got some additional slides to present as well to kind of tee up the policy issues for the council.
Okay. Council members, you want to ask questions of Nathan and Peter before we move to what Scott's got, or we ready to go ahead and go with that? Okay.
All right, as Kirsten's getting this, and I only have five slides, so we'll, we'll go through these. This is your current fee recovery policy from the last adopted budget. City will seek full cost recovery for all direct permitting activity and all appropriate indirect costs. That's your actual policy. Some of the things for you to consider during your discussion, and you've touched on some of these. One of the things that a city provides is accessibility of information. So consider how much of a bar you want to create for people to get access for information by charging fees to get access to that information or that service. That leads to the public versus private benefit. Chip already mentioned that, so I won't go through that again, except to say that in most of our permits, except for building, there is some benefit to the public by having that permit. It may be for the public to interact with the decision-maker on that permit, like a public hearing before the city council or the planning commissioner, the hearing examiner. It might be something that the city wants to encourage, maybe by keeping fees for accessory dwelling units low. Or it could be one of the things that we looked at in this study is, we do quite a few pre-application meetings. We're definitely not recovering full cost for those meetings. There's a lot more staff time that we put into those than around $400, I think, is the, the charge for those meetings. But again, there's a very real public benefit to having those meetings. We get better projects, it's more efficient, it frees staff up to provide that information to the public at the front counter, for example. So there's a balancing act there. One of the things that we noticed in, in this study compared to the last one is the percentage of non-recoverable costs. So the things we can't charge for went down from 33% of DSG's costs to 12% of DSG's costs. And that had to do with several things. First of all, the variability of services from year to year. Back in 2008, when the last, which was the data for the 2009 study, DSG was doing a fair amount of long-range planning and other policy work that we can't recover cost for. In 2012, DSG did relatively little of that kind of policy work. The other thing is that the, the data has evolved since then. The 2009 study was based on not actual time sheets, but staff estimates of how they were spending their time. This study is actually based on staff time sheets, so the data's gotten better over the years. But the policy question is, another way to look at it is, what percentage of DSG's overall costs are you comfortable recovering? I mean, I guess that's the central question. This is just a little different way of looking at it. How much non-recoverable costs are you willing to tolerate? The fourth one is, and this is a little bit more for when we start talking about adjustments to fees at a future meeting, what will the market bear? So your direction might be to recover X percent of costs for building services, but when we actually apply that to the fees to bring you to that level, we may find that we have the highest fees in the region. Or we might find we're right in the middle, or we might find we're still very low. But it's another consideration to think about.
Do we presently have the highest fees in the region?
No, we don't.
Do we presently have, where are we, right in the middle, low?
I think we were, we were pretty much right in the middle. I've got a slide that'll kind of show that. Another one's equity. There's certain things that we are not charging for right now, certain types of permits.
Scott, let me just, we've got, say, nine minutes left.
Okay.
So obviously, we're not going to have much time for discussion.
Yeah.
This is more informational, but you'll want to give us at least a little room to give you feedback.
Okay. So equity is, there's permits we're not charging for, do we want to charge for those kinds of permits? And the last one to consider is, I think my recommendation is you should look at the permits that bring in the greatest amount of revenue or the most number of permits, rather than the ones that maybe were way off, but we only get one permit in per year. Nathan already covered some of this about approaches to fee recovery. We are recommending that we recover a certain percentage for each, each type of service, that we establish new fees for those permits without fees, and then we have a number of housekeeping and corrections to show you on the fee schedule. These are examples of building permits for each service. This is the one where it shows that we're, we're sort of in the middle on, almost at average, cost recovery for building permits, just under, same thing, just under for planning. And we don't have good data right now for engineering on what other cities are, where they are for engineering, but we're at 48% there. The next step is getting your direction for cost recovery, which I'm sure will happen at a future meeting, and then once we get that direction, we'll bring a fee resolution back to you.
So, Jane?
Scott, I have a question about some of the services that are provided without a fee, because it seems to me that that is an area where we could look at, you know, what, I don't quite understand the rationale behind not charging for a couple of these. Building permit extensions, for example, final short-plant approval. I certainly understand why we wouldn't want to charge for a tree protection permit, you know, some of these. But it seems to me that there are a couple in here that, you know, they are providing a service that could be charged for.
Right, and the city hasn't charged for those, and that's why we're bringing that to your, to your attention.
Yeah, so I mean, let's look at this. At some point, we could discuss those individually.
Dan and then Mike.
Yeah, I mean, you've asked a question. We have an existing council policy. It's, it's been agreed upon by several prior councils, of which some of us have been members of when that policy was, was adopted. I think the only question before the council now is whether we want to change that policy. I mean, the policy is 100% cost recovery, and that's always what we've done, and there's a very good reason for it. And that's because we know we're limited to 1%. We know that our costs go up more than that. Every time we don't do cost recovery, we just raid the general fund more and more. It's not, it's the opposite of what Mike was saying. You know, the reality is, if we don't do cost recovery, then we are, the general fund is subsidizing permitting. It's not permitting subsidizing general fund, it's general fund subsidizing permitting. So unless this council wants to all of a sudden change gears, and change directions, and go away from an adopted council policy, I think the whole purpose of this study was to see what changes you had to make to comply with council policy. So I mean, I don't know, is anyone on the council, maybe besides Mike, who wants to change council policy?
I think we're, speaking for myself, yeah, let's, I want the conversation. Mike, just, let me, Dan's going to not sit easily until he gets at least a little bit of a response here. So I think you're asking a fair question. I think it's, the reality is, we're not going to get through this whole discussion this evening. I've still got a couple of questions I need to ask. I think Mike's, are you a questioner or are you a statement?
I'm going to make a statement.
Okay. Let me ask question then first, and I'm going to see if anybody else has questions, because I want to get through those tonight before we get to policy review, okay? So my question is this, if I understand correctly, you've broken the costs into, off the table because, ineligible, I guess is the term, and eligible. But then within eligible, you have a further gradation that is solely for the benefit of the applicant versus of community benefit. And I'm trying to understand, if it's of community benefit, why didn't that fall all the way over into the ineligible bucket? Can you help me understand where that line gets drawn and why?
Well, in terms of the cost, what...
Say, dead one.
In terms of the, the cost, the cost doesn't change to, to perform the work. Your policy decision then says, if you're not going to be at 100%, there are certain reasons. And in many cities, they, for example, take design review, that by having design review, it doesn't benefit just the, the person building the home or the building. You've set some standards in your codes, and therefore, you're checking to see whether or not it meets those. Otherwise, if you didn't have the design review, the person could build whatever they wanted to build in terms of how it looked and what that design would be. So the community has benefit because you're taking this and saying, we've set these standards, and they're meeting some of the standards, and we go through that process. So, so the cost doesn't change, but you, as a, as an elected body, can decide, is there some other benefit that we see? And that's usually the discussion we have with other jurisdictions, is, do you see something that you can say, oh, well, these planning things, we mitigate things, we have people do things in terms of transportation, and so therefore, we say, that's a public benefit, it's not just for the developer?
Okay, so I understand that. So help me under, give me an example of something that's, that's clearly over in the ineligible category?
Code enforcement. So that's one that we almost, and there was actually part of a court case dealt with code enforcement. So code enforcement isn't included as part of those costs. Now, that doesn't mean, in some areas where we are, they might charge some, but if you get caught, you know, illegally building something, you might have to pay a higher building fee because it actually takes more work to take a look at something that you've already built or something and go through the process again. But, but again, that's, that's a perfect example of what we consider to be ineligible. Long-range planning is sort of another one, although we've had some debates, different debates with people as to whether or not long-range planning is totally ineligible or not part of the cost to be recovered.
Okay, thank you. So if there are no other questions, we come back to the policy question. We have 120 seconds, no, 60 seconds to cover policy.
Can we extend it onto the regular agenda? Do we have the ability to extend it onto the regular agenda?
Of course we do.
Sorry, I'm thinking...
I will point out, we do have this teed up again on September 16th for regular business.
Right, but we have, we still have to give staff direction on what to do. So we've extended study sessions into, we just have to take attendance and continue along.
That's actually not what we've done. We've usually identified that we've put those on to, we put those on to the agenda the past, the last time we did that. We actually planned for there to be a specific identification that that topic was going to be discussed. And given that this has been posted, I think we're best off leaving it to the next council meeting.
But can't we just say it's a continuation of the study session?
Which we did do, yeah, we did that at a meeting.
But it's, we're not, we're just, the study session's going to last more than 50 minutes. We're not stuck with the time period.
If you want to call the regular session, then the regular council meeting, starting at a later point in time, I'd be okay with that. But the thing is, you can give direction, but you can't make any decisions. I mean, you have to treat it differently.
That's all we're asked to do, is giving direction, so that's...
If you want to do it that way, that's okay.
Okay, council, you guys okay with running a few more minutes here on this? Okay, so we carry on. So we are at statements, and I think Mike, you're the first up with a statement.
The deputy mayor missed an opportunity because we're kind of seeing eye to eye on this. So I think the, to kind of refute a little bit of what you said, I think the, the council has a very strong record of going against policy, and we give a little bit of deference to precedent, but as from the legacy project, for example, that's our most recent example of diverging a bit from policy. I do agree with the deputy mayor that this should be as close to 100% recovery as possible. I think what the deputy mayor was alluding to, though, I am concerned that we, that $500,000 that I alluded to is coming from the general fund, that we look, that we look at DSG as subsidizing that which should be in the general fund. You're looking, whizical on that.
I am too.
Well, clearly, we were at, I don't know, yeah, it's working. What I heard you say is that DSG should be subsidizing the general fund.
No, no, the other way around. What I worry about by increasing, I'm kind of at a loss of how we went from 94 to 88 and all the way down to 70, and that, the difference between 88 and 70% is looking at, at things the general fund is doing and, and bringing it over to DSG, whether, yeah, as legitimate, whether it's legitimate or not. So this exercise, what would help to me when we finally get down to it, is kind of identifying those services that DSG provides, or that the staff provides, that we look as, definitely DSG in the gray area, definitely not DSG, and then make the call on, on getting as close to 100% recovery as possible. as close to 100% recovery as possible.
Tana?
Has the definition of city overhead or DSG overhead changed between this study and the last study?
That's a great question. The methodology for calculating it has changed for citywide overhead, okay? And back in 2009, we were being, this is an internal analysis done by staff, Steve Lancaster was here, I helped out. It was very, very conservative on the citywide overhead side, because of the concern, the whole court case concern, well, city being regalian and someone else, as I recall. In any case, so we're very conservative until we totally overhauled our citywide overhead model, and I have a number I can hang my hat on. And so, one of the reasons, just to answer that question, Councilmember Ciro's question, that it went from 88.5% down to 70% overall, is because the citywide overhead number went up significantly, okay, from 90,000 to 260,000, all right? The other reason is the unrecoverable services, the long-range planning, that was a much higher percentage, 33% back in 2008, that got a lot smaller in 2012. And so, that affected the costs that were included in the study. And there is that kind of variability from year to year. Does that hit the nail on the head? Okay.
Noel, can you explain what you were trying to explain to me about what staff is envisioning as a schedule?
Yeah, let me just see if this helps in terms of how to make sure you have adequate time to work through this issue. And Chip, jump in here, too, if I mistake kind of how we were talking about this today. So, as I mentioned, on September 16th, you've got this issue back before you for a policy discussion. What I think we were envisioning is that would not be the meeting where you would adopt a new fee schedule. The actual adoption would come in November during budget work. So, you do have on your calendar, I think, another time to have some more policy discussion and debate, if you want to use it that way. But certainly, whatever direction you can give staff today will help prepare them to come back and have a better meeting for you on the 16th. But I just wanted you to know that we weren't intending that the 16th would be your final bite at this, by any means.
My only concern, Noel, is just that, right now, we, it's all fresh in our minds, we've gone through this, plus Bruce will not be here on the 16th, so we lose that advantage. So, it's, it would be, and then, I just think, if we can get the guidance now, we may even be able to scrap the 16th and let staff get ready to move forward or not move forward. And if you don't, if we can't get there, then we'll push it to the 16th.
And just to piggyback on that, my concern is that, not just that we're losing time, but right now, clearly, we're losing money. And with the dramatic increase in permitting that we've experienced this year already, we're waiting till November, we're passing up 60-plus permits, you know, each quarter. And if we're waiting till the end of the year, we're passing up a lot of money.
And just to, Scott, Chip, is there a timeframe on which, I mean, does our decision-making gate when this takes place, or is it sort of preordained that it takes place at the end of a year or something, so it's such that it doesn't matter when we actually adopt it?
We would prefer that it take place January 1st, because on January 1st, there's automatic increase, I'll just call it a cost of living increase, not sure if that's the right term, that you adopted several years ago. So, we'd have to update our systems and our fees, say, in November, or because, or October, and then do it again for January 1st. And that lends a lot of confusion out in the public about which fee are they paying, and when they come with a check that's prepared, they don't know what fee they're looking at. That, it's just a practical thing, but we're happy to do whatever the council asks us to.
Okay.
So, further.
And mybuildingpermit.com is another layer that we have to work with. We don't control that resource, so we'd have to get them to implement the fee twice, basically.
Okay.
So, further digging into the, to the actual cost amount, Councilmember Ciro identified a $500,000 difference, acknowledging that he was using the 94% number, but what, what revenue, basically, with the council's direction and policy standing, that we collect all of our costs, and we're at 70? Basically, what is the number of revenue that we are not collecting right now? So, what's the delta there that?
That, it's $619,000.
So, when we're looking at a general fund, and we are scrambling for.
For what period?
For year.
For 2020.
Yeah, it's on, it's on Table 2, Page 3 of the Agenda Bill. That first column shows the unrecovered permit cost at $619,000.
Okay.
And that is, that we would estimate that we normally could collect. I mean, that is a significant portion of our general fund. I mean, when we're talking about a property tax raise, rising 1%, I mean, this would, we wouldn't recover that for three years. I mean, that's, we're not talking, you know, just a small purse. This is a, you know, armored vehicle amount of money that we are not putting into the general fund.
Every 1% of property tax is $100,000 right now. So, it's a 6% property, equivalent of 6% property tax increase.
Well, I think the question, if, I mean, the question is, not so much the $619,000, it's what activities are being performed that should rightfully be DSG? So, I mean, you could have, you know, that could be the right figure, 70% unrecoverable if DSG is doing, if DSG is doing services which are not recoverable, right?
Right.
Those have been taken out.
Those have been taken out.
They have already been taken out.
Yes.
Okay, so, I've heard from a couple of council members, just get to 100%. I guess, I am sure, Chip, Scott, that there is a recommendation that's coming from you at some point that says, don't gun for 100% because of these risks of overshooting. Are you anticipating that you'll tell us that in this next meeting? Is that, is, you know, how you would actually try to structure this thing? If, I think what I hear is, recover as much as you reasonably safely can, and I'm sure that council members wouldn't say, push it to the absolute limit such that you invite a lawsuit. But maybe they would say differently, but that's what I would say. And so, can you help me out with how you're going to come back to us with something? What's this thing going to look like, and give us the preview, I guess, right now?
Sure. If we were directed for 100% across the board, we would take a look at our fees and determine what those numbers would have to be to get you to 100%. And look at the work that we use to prepare those permits, make sure we aren't overshooting, at least in that snapshot in time. The other thing we would bring to you, just, I'll allude back to the market, is what are other cities charging, currently charging for those fees, just so you have an understanding of where Mercer Island would fit on that scale. You may still decide to do 100%, even if that makes Mercer Island have the highest fees in the region. That's, that's your decision. But we at least want you to have that information, just so you have a benchmark for comparison.
Okay.
Chip, how much should we pay for the study that was just done?
I believe we budgeted $12,000.
I would suggest that if we are concerned about overcharging, that we have to repeat the study every year, and for $12,000, it's probably the best $12,000 we ever spend, given the amount of money that seems to be at issue. I'm sure you would not object to that. But, seriously, I mean, you look at, we're sitting here with a delta of over $600,000 that, you know, if we had done this study last year, we potentially would have be $600,000 further ahead in 2012. It's a little bit hard, and I'm not blaming anyone, I understand that, but you look at a number like that, and, you know, it's a sort of, you, I, with all due respect, Scott, I think, if we could implement this tomorrow, we should implement this tomorrow, because, you know, we've seen, year after year, Chip coming to us, showing us where the lines are crossing, and we know we got a problem with the general fund, and every day that we're not addressing that problem, we're just digging ourselves deeper into a hole. And the faster we can avoid that, the better we're going to be. So, I mean, I.
I gotta start, I gotta start the meeting. Ally and Katie, I think, will tell me, we've got to go ahead and start the meeting, or can we delay this? Can I say something that formally delays the start of the meeting for a few minutes here?
I think you can just delay it, and then be safe, just saying you're delaying it, we're finishing up, we're concluding the study session.
Okay. So, what she said. We are still involved in a study session regarding development services, where is it? Development services, cost of services, and cost recovery fee analysis. We are delaying the start of the meeting for probably another 10 minutes or so, and then we'll launch into that. So, if you are here for the regular meeting, be patient. Okay, so, Chip, this is a little bit like getting your hands around Jell-O, and it's challenging, and there is no right answer. It's a value call. I will tell you, from looking at when FCS Group has done previous studies, and they've, with the recession sort of in a rearview mirror, there's been very few of these studies done. People aren't asking to do these studies, but the last time they were doing all these for various communities, I think Redmond was the only community who was seeking 100% recovery across the board. Only Redmond, interesting. And so, I'm, this is one of the few times where I probably won't give you a recommendation, because there is no right answer, but if, I think it is worth noting that, as it relates to planning services and engineering services, most do not seek full cost recovery because of the public benefit. I find that interesting. That doesn't mean you can't seek it. You're well within your rights to seek it, and as Deputy Mayor Grau said, that's a significant chunk of change, 6% in terms of equivalent property tax increase. Peter, did you have something?
Well, I just wanted to say, you know, you know, there's some reluctance in terms of trying to over-recover. You know, there's lots of variables, and development services, both building and planning, you know, it's one of the few city-type services that are really linked to the economy. And so, when you're trying to project, when you're trying to project what your fee's going to be and how much volume you're going to have, it, you're still doing it based on your budget. And in certain instances, if you went back to 2008, we probably thought, well, we're going to do okay, and we're going to do this, but by the end of 2008, you know, development just dropped off the cliff in the fall. So, you know, part of it is still, there's still some budget estimating that's going to happen, and you might over-recover, you might under-recover. It's not an exact science, especially given the development community and, you know, depending on what types of, you know, opportunities they have on the island to develop. So, those are things that also you need to think about considering. Also, as some of the organizations that, like you said, we haven't done a lot of these studies, there are not a lot, there's more starting up now, where people are looking at their fees, is that there's probably a fixed cost just to have a building department or a planning department just to be open. So, that's the other thing, is we, I'm not sure whether there's some increased available capacity that will help do this, and that's what's causing some of the lower things. You have to have certain people still at the desk, still to answer questions and things like that, even if the development activity is low. Now, when it was real high, you probably had more people, and you did lay off some people, but there are still some fixed costs that sort of go with providing that, this kind of service.
Okay, so, Mike, and what I'm trying to do is come back to, let's get a wrap-up here now, that gives Scott and Chip some directions to what they're to come back with at the next meeting where we're going to consider this.
Okay, just, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, I already talked about, I talked about full recovery, I'm conceptually okay with that, but I'd like to see it revenue-neutral, meaning, we're relieving this $500,000 from, I'm looking at the Director Court on this, we're relieving the general fund of $600,000, let's say, annually, potentially. This is an opportu, how would we make this revenue-neutral with the taxes that we have raised, with the belief that the $600,000 would continually come from the general fund?
Yeah, I would, well, to answer your question simply and directly, you would be looking to reduce, you know, either property taxes or utility taxes. But I would be very careful, those who know me, that that's a very economically sensitive revenue source, and I don't, I like to have more, I like to have revenue sources that aren't quite so sensitive, making up my general fund. I want to increase them out that's economically sensitive. That sets us up for all kinds of problems that we were able to avoid, to a great extent during the recession, that Kirkland, Redmond, and Bellevue really suffered from.
No, but the general fund was designed with that $600,000, that we'd have to finance that $600,000. So, now, that's going away, that's.
But that's a nice, ongoing, dependable revenue source, replacing that with this revenue-neutral option with development fees, that's replacement.
And understand.
I think your point's made, and I suspect you're not going to get support from the full council, so I want to poll everybody else and then wrap up here so that we can move on, okay? Sorry about that. Debbie?
First of all, thank you. It's obviously been a very interesting evening, and I appreciate the effort that's gone into it. From a principle perspective, just to go back to Deputy Mayor Grau's point, I do see no reason, at this point, to detour from policy of previous council. I'd be interested if there was opinions that differ, both on council and also from staff, but I think that would be one of the first points that I would look forward to moving forward. In principle, I do, again, agree with this concept of maximizing the cost recovery. I am probably a fairly middle-of-the-road-to-potentially-conservative person financially, and I do get nervous when we start talking hard numbers of $600,000. That's assuming a perfect world and science, which has been referred to here, at least, as Jell-O. So, it's not, but it's not a significant amount of money, and I liked Tana's phrase of, "an armored truck worth of money," but I'm not sure whether or not 600 is the number that I would want to have formalized in the public's mind. So, let's go ahead and look at that. I also am very interested in what other cities are doing, and how they're taking some of the roller coaster out of this. Again, I think predictability and consistency is important to our community. What I don't want them to do is to see permitting fees going up and down, or taking radical swings at any point. When you plan a building, be it a home or otherwise, it's a multi-year initiative, quite generally, and I'd like to see us take that same timeframe. And so, with that, I do look forward to additional discussions, and appreciate the time you've given us.
Jane?
Well, I agree with Debbie's points. I think we do need to recover our costs, especially in the building costs, building permits. I would like us to look at the items that we're not charging for now, perhaps add those in, some of those items that we, or services we provide without a fee that go along with getting a building permit, or getting an extension, some of these things. I think consistency, we should aim for 100% recovery, cost recovery in building, maybe less than that in planning and engineering, and I appreciate what you mentioned, Scott, about private versus public benefit. We need to look at those carefully, and that's why I'd like to see what we're charging now, you know, compared to what other cities do as well. So, that's it.
Okay. Dan, Tana, you guys?
Very briefly, I support just what our city council policy has always been, which is full cost recovery for all services. In response to Mike's point, very simply, Mike, several times now, you've said we've got to fund the left one reserve, we got to, and we're going to be talking about that in a few minutes anyway, in the council report that we're starting to go into there. We also know the street fund will run out of money in two years, so I'd like to say we got $600,000 worth of fat in the general fund that we can now move, but it's by your own statements of what you want to fund, and which I fully agree with, the $600,000 will be, will avoid other tax increases we'd otherwise have to consider.
Tana?
Yeah, I like full cost recovery. I also clearly want to point out that we're, you know, when we say, well, we might not get to 100, we're at 40 and 38. So, there's a lot of room, even if we don't get to 100, to get to 85, I'd be comfortable with. That would be a heck of a lot more money than we're getting now at the 38 and 40. So, you know, I say again, 100% on building, and your recommendation, your informed recommendation, is always on what percentage we should collect in the other departments, or the other sections and services, but clearly, something a lot higher than 38 and 40%.
Tana's comments reflect mine, or my thoughts. I think we're, want to be higher than we are, but I'm sensitive to the idea that trying to get to 100 is a bit of a fool's mission, because it gets us into lawsuit territory, and with something that's bouncing around the way it is, I don't think you can actually get there. I share the sense that looking at public benefit, weighing that in, makes some sense, and so, just to straight get all the way there, I'm softer on it than that, but clearly higher than where we are today.
Can we just also decide whether we're going to wait till January 1st, or whether there's any desire in the council to move this along quicker?
Okay, so, Dan said, posed a question, it's a fair question, comes with a bunch of complexity from staff's perspective if they try and do it twice, but council's interested in that. So, all in favor of trying to get it done quicker?
I don't think I know enough. I'd like to know what the cost is to staff, with the cost, system cost, with the impact of. would be to the community who's got some degree of consistency as far as January 1st every year.
Adding your head to, you say I don't want to make a decision on that right now? Okay.
But can staff answer the question that Debbie just asked?
Thank you. I was just asking, could you pull off an October 1 start date? No. And so, the soonest I would assume you could pull it off is maybe November 1st. Am I correct there? Maybe.
Well, part of the problem is we've had a heavy, heavy workload of permits that we're trying to get through the system. So, it's going to be hard for me to pull people off of processing permits to try to get something done a month earlier, a month and a half early. And again, if council's direction is to do that, we'll figure out how to do it. We haven't actually sat down with the fee schedule and figured out what fees might go up and how much. We also have to weigh those against the number of hours, the actual cost of processing a permit. So, we need to do that first.
I just, I sort of remind the council that November 1st versus January 1st is a 1% property tax increase. That's the difference.
Yeah, I hear you. We've got to remember about the people who are receiving this. We don't want to poke them twice. We want to poke them one time real hard at the end of the fiscal year.
What I've heard are two go fasts, two don't really know enough. I am on no work at this at a reasonable pace. I think Mike's on it's at a reasonable pace. Based on that, let's leave this question, we've got to have the next meeting anyway. We're not going to get this done, we're not going to make a policy decision here tonight. So, I think you've got direction to come back with some recommendations. You've heard council all over the map on this, so best of what? Putting together some options for us that you think will suffice and we'll go from there, okay? Thank you, council members, and thank you, Peter, Nathan, and staff members for your work on this, much appreciated. We will reconvene at 7:20 and start the regular meeting at that time. That's five minutes from now. So, you have to clean up a little bit here.
...who is considered is anybody who's engaged in some kind of island activity, sport, community organizing, anything that really falls into making our lives in the community healthy, better, and doing that with the attitude that Phil exemplifies. So this year's Flash Family Inspirational Award goes to Rand Gin. And if you would like to... I'm just going to say a few things about Rand, and I'd like to preface this by saying, usually I hand over the nominations and the committee sits down, takes about an hour or whatever, you know, and they get back to me. And I decided to go get a Starbucks and I came back to my office and everything was back in my box and they were done. And I had never had so, but back there and I saw, you know, the Rand's was on top and I thought, it's someone's paperwork, and they were done. And they had read through all of them and made a decision faster than I've ever seen. So I just want to tell you that, that was a big deal. And that was kind of fun. But Rand is receiving this because he really exemplifies service and a positive attitude to Mercer Island. And if you know him, and I know a lot of you do, for the past 35 years, he's worked on numerous campaigns and levies. He's been an active member of the Historical Society. He's served on the Mercer Island School Board, on the Youth and Family Services Board, as well as a host of other boards in the community. In addition to the local endeavors, he's helped out in a lot of important causes. He helped 10,000 villages with sales of international goods at fair market prices for third-world artisans. He's assisted with bringing the African Children's Choir to Mercer Island. He's contributed to the efforts of Habitat for Humanity and sorting food donations to First Harvest. And he's an active member of the Mercer Island Rotary. And on that, he helps with the infrastructure setting up. He's on committees. He's been a major donor. He's helped out everywhere. He tutors once a week with the Leadership Tutoring Committee. He's basically a go-to guy. And if you know him, he is gentle, he's reliable, he's calm, he's professionally straightforward. He'll help out with anything. And I think that, I know that you want someone to quote that community work makes you feel good. And it's this kind of attitude and his goodwill that really brings together all the best qualities and somebody that can have that impact that Phil had hoped to acknowledge every year. So he's our winner this year, and I really thank you for giving us the time to acknowledge Mr. Rand. And I just want to say something before, so every year when we do these awards, I'm laughing because it...
Before you tell the funny joke?
No, no, it's just that, it's, um, when I went to, so I went back to a group of people that I know who know Rand, and I was trying to, part of getting the award is that his name is on the perpetual plaque at the community center. So when you go up there next time and see Rand Gin is up there for the 2013 recipient of the Flash Family Inspirational Award, and it's been put up there, so it's there. And the next piece of it is that Phil wanted each person, each recipient, to get a gift. And so when we think about something that matters to them, we speak of people, but what are their interests are? And so everybody who I asked said, you know, I know that he used to like cars, I know he used to do this, but you know, I really think that what he does is he does a lot of community service. And, uh, and said, you know, and so two people came back to me and said, I think you ought to make a donation in his name to Rotary and for more community service. And so it was really interesting. So, you know, you could get him a gift certificate to Island books, but I think he'd give it to his wife. And, uh, anyway, it was, it was, so in that spirit, we're making a donation in Rand's honor to the Mercer Island Rotary to continue his work. So, anyway, thank you. Thank you on behalf of all of us here.
Rand, you want to say a few words?
Yeah.
You need a speech, Rand. He's a little firebrand, you know?
I don't do speeches.
Oh, that's not what I hear.
No, I was humbled by this because I don't expect it, I didn't, I wasn't really aware of it. And I'm actually on the Historical Society Board with Phil Flash, but I don't think he had anything to do with it. So I'm just very pleased and it was very nice of the committee to choose me. I really appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Oh, thank you. Council members, any comments?
Rand, this should cost you, what, $5 at the Rotary? What do you think, Nancy? $5 at least?
At least.
All right.
Okay, Rand.
Anyone else?
Sure. Yeah, I mean, I just want to say that, you know, I am new-ish to the island compared to the people who stand up and say they've been here for 30 years. And yet, I think I know like three things about the island that, you know, I knew from the day I moved here, one was about the dragon, the dragon park, one was the train park, Mercerdale, and the other was Rand Gin as a community leader. And, you know, things come in the mail and Rand Gin is on the board, things, campaigns come out and he is on those committees. He is everywhere and Mercer Island is truly better because of Rand Gin, so, thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, it's, I mean, I've worked with Rand on many campaigns over the years, and particularly on CMEPS campaigns and, you know, it's, Rand has an amazing record of making sure that these campaigns meet campaign requirements. He's always the campaign treasurer on these things and it's, it is a thankless job filing PDC forms and keeping people on the straight and narrow, doing it, but Rand has been tireless in it and he's the first one to always volunteer for these public interest campaigns and everything else he does is just, he's one of the type of people who makes us all proud to be islanders. So, thanks very much.
Well, ditto all that. I have been around for more than 30 years and he's been the go-to guy way back when and along with his wife Judy, it was, sometimes they came as a pair. You get one, you got the other one, it was great. I've been working with Rand on the Historical Society and he figures things out. He's very brief with his, like, one-word emails sometimes and he gets right down to what needs to be done and he does it. And he's a treasure for this community.
Janine?
As we've heard, his name is everywhere. Every board, every letterhead, every everything. And I know the few initial experiences I had back to Parks Levy and all, it was fabulous to have somebody that you could look at and again be inspired by and learn from at the same time. So I look forward to many more years of that same learning experience coming from you. So thank you. And Judy as well. It is a team.
And I would just say, when I first ran for office, I had to get a treasurer for my campaign, not Rand, because he was already employed at that point by somebody else. And my treasurer spent hours trying to figure the whole thing out and going through a lot of work. Then I went to a CMEPS meeting at some point after that and Rand was there and was, he was teeing up the CMEPS treasury job and he said, I need this, this, and this, we're done. And I realized that having somebody who's truly an expert at this is a wonderful thing and Rand has been that for this community for a long time. So my hat is off to you for all the work you've done and for being so competent at it and doing such a great job. Thank you. So with that, I think we're done. Tara, you were sort of waving your hand back there. Is there something I'm supposed to do based on that? No? Did you want? Do we have a camera?
Yeah, I'd love it.
Okay. Rand, you got to come back up and we'll get a picture of you with the council. How are we going to do this? We were going to try and sort out a systematic way to do this.
If you stay and the other, the three and three stand behind each other?
You want to?
Him up here?
Whatever.
Come on up, come on up here. Come on up here. We had the thought that we should get this organized so we don't have to figure it out every time, but we still have to figure it out every time.
All right.
Yeah, I was trying to get to the back.
Boy, girl, boy, girl.
Excuse me. She was thinking they all sounded goofy.
Come stand by your husband.
Yeah, replace me.
Boy, girl, boy, girl.
Yeah, okay, you got to get between Bruce and, no, you're close to here, that's close.
Okay. Thank you both.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, we come now to appearances. Opportunity for anybody wishes to, to speak to the council. You have three minutes. Please begin by giving your name and address. Other rules of engagement are on the back wall there. So with that, I'll open it up to anybody who wishes to speak to the council. Come on up.
I'm going to apologize in advance to people. I'm going to be standing up for various presentations just from a back issue, so it's, don't take offense if I stand during your speech or staff.
No, no worries. I just had a couple of questions based on what I heard in the study session.
And if you could, just begin by giving us your name.
My name is Milford Walker. I live at 616093rd Avenue.
Thank you.
The first one is, is I saw you had like 15% for overhead for the mayor and the argument for the city manager and then the staff overhead. So my question is, no one's required to build anything, so if everyone stopped building anything, would we stop having that part of the staff? So how do you get those percentages to allocate to the building permits? And the second one is, I was at a school board meeting and they said, one of the significant costs, the cost for building schools $25 million and then another 50% to build, I mean, for project development costs, which they said part of it was expensive permitting fees, so can you reduce permitting fees for public projects like schools? And sales taxes on education, which means if you're spending money on education, to tax education, it makes much sense. So I didn't know if there was anything the city council could do to address the legislature and ask, why are you taxing education to pay for education? Didn't make sense to me. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Come on up.
My name's Anna Schwed. I'm actually visiting Mercer Island. I live in Bellevue, 1071 108th Avenue Northeast. And I work for an organization called Up With People. I don't know if any of you have ever heard of our group before. Up With People is a nonprofit global education program. So what we do is we gather young people from all over the world. Currently, we have 100 people from 20 different countries traveling with us and we take them on a six-month world tour throughout three different regions of the world. We're going to be in Washington State for the first time in 19 years and in the Seattle area, kind of working in Bellevue, Mercer Island, and then Seattle also. What we're looking for is we're looking for host families for our group of 100 people. We're going to be in the area doing 2,000 hours of community service. We're staying with host families and we also perform a musical show. The show will be performed on the 29th of September at McCall Hall in Seattle. For ticketing information or to get more information about how to become a host family, it's just a one-week commitment, you can visit www-upwithpeople.org/Seattle. We'd love to get as many Mercer Island community members involved with our visit. We're also working with Northwest Area Rotary Clubs are our sponsor here in the area. So we have five sponsoring Rotary Clubs, Seattle Four Rotary, University Rotary, Fremont Rotary, Lake Forest Park, and Overlake Bellevue Rotary Club. So we're going to be having a community-wide service project where we'll be inviting community members to come, volunteer with our cast, and we're focusing on hunger. That'll be the evening of September 26th. We're going to be working with local food banks to package food to those in need. You can find all that information again online at www-upwithpeople.org/Seattle. Thank you very much for having me today. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, with that, we'll close appearances. And let's see, Milford, you saw the folks in the room who were talking to the council earlier, so if during the break you want to go tag Scott or Chip, I bet they would be able to at least have a conversation with you about the questions you raised. We move to minutes. We have minutes from our August 12th meeting. Do we have a motion to accept the minutes?
Move to approve the minutes of the study session and regular meeting, August 12th, 2013.
Second.
Changes? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye? Opposed?
Abstain.
Abstain. Motion carries with one abstention. Yeah, he wasn't here. I wasn't here either, but I didn't let that stop me from voting in favor.
You were so impressed with what we did.
I loved it. Mike was wiser than me. We move to the consent calendar. The consent calendar has three sets of payables, payroll, and Agenda Bill 4870 and Agenda Bill 4872.
Can we accept the consent calendar?
All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Great. We move to regular business. Agenda Bill 4869, Economic Development Discussion. Welcome back, Scott.
There we go. Now we're on. Thank you again, Scott Greenberg, Development Services Director. This is an agenda bill about economic development. Council has discussed economic development at your planning session in January and your meeting planning session in June. At the June meeting, you asked staff to meet with council members Sen and Bertin and Terry Mormon, who's the director of the Mercer Island Chamber of Commerce and myself, to talk about what might be the next steps with economic development. We did meet on August 1st. Councilmember Bertin, there was a bit of an error and she was not invited to the meeting, so I've already apologized to her for that. There was just an error with the draft minutes and her name was not listed as one of the council members who wanted to participate in that meeting. So we apologize for that and we'll have her involved in the future. At the meeting, we had talked about a way to move econom, a discussion of economic development forward for the council, and that would be to establish an economic development task force. The purpose of the task force would be to advise the city council and also the Chamber of Commerce on economic development issues. The idea is that the task force could meet over the course of a year, not very many meetings, but very meaningful meetings, where the task force might tackle some of the seven questions listed on pages one and two of your agenda bill. The task force could be appointed by the mayor, similar to the Sustainability Task Force, how that was formed, and we came up with a list of stakeholders that might be good to be represented on the task force, who you see that listed on page two of your agenda bill. It could be quite a large task force if there were up to three council members and one member of each of these different stakeholder groups, but I think it's doable. The idea then, the task force would make recommendations for an economic development policy, maybe something more than what we have today, or some kind of program that could be considered by both the council and Chamber of Commerce. One of the key questions that the task force would need to work on is what is a city's appropriate role, or appropriate city role in economic development? That's why the chamber would be heavily involved because my guess is that there would be a number of activities that the task force would see needed in the community that might not be a city role, but might be a Chamber of Commerce role. So we are recommending that the mayor establish an economic development task force for up to one year with members appointed by the mayor.
Okay, questions? Mike?
Thank you. I see your list of stakeholders and stakeholders by definition kind of are on both sides. And if I were to make some assumptions on all these stakeholders, I would, I would say they were all pro or aggressive development, meaning I don't see any stakeholders from the communities, especially those communities or neighborhoods that neighbor the central business district. Is there a reason why we're not considering those folks as stakeholders?
They could be added and that's something council could discuss tonight if there were any additional groups you'd like to see represented. I don't necessarily see the outcome of this task force being all about development. I'm sure development would be touched on, but it could be other types of activities that the city or chamber could do that would help make businesses successful, particularly in the town center and even the south end shopping center.
Other questions? Okay, I'll bring it back for discussion then. Tana, maybe you want to start off because you were the key party who was involved in this?
Sure. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, Scott. You just, don't go too far, I'm sure we'll be back.
I'll be here.
Yeah, as we started to talk a lot even last year about town center and some of the issues, whether it was, as usual, parking or some other issue around town center, and then we were presented with the light rail design, and these were kind of bookends to what is happening on Mercer Island and what is to come. So five years ago, an economic development task force or a working group or committee might have been unnecessary, but as we are developing and growing as a community and as we're looking forward to light rail coming and having to plan around more people in our town center, we talked about empty storefronts, now burgeoning businesses growing on our island, how do we balance that and how do we address some of the questions that are popping up, whether it's wayfinding signs, lighting, kiosks, parking, people throwing out, we want a Trader Joe's, you know, whatever the issues are, we don't have that group that kind of comes together and talks about them. And so I think the idea of an economic committee, an economic development committee, and again, economic development might seem to, you know, big store, box store sounding, but an economic development committee or working group or task force to really wrestle with some of these issues and support the new businesses on the island and to support some creative entrepreneurial spirit that exists on this island. So I think this is a great time to start this, to get ahead of the curve of what's to come and so that we really are taking a planning approach to our town center, to transit-oriented development, and to really think things through in a way that works for businesses and for the entire island. So I'm excited about this opportunity and the discussions we've had so far about this, of course with the chamber.
Dan?
I agree with everything you just said, Tana, but I don't see that that's what this task force is tasked to do. I mean, this task force has got a mandate, which I don't know which direction it's going to head. You know, what is, what does economic development mean on Mercer Island? I mean, I, that's not, that wasn't one of the things you just talked about. And what does successful economic development look like to the community? You know, I, to me, you know, we got onto this because we were upset that there wasn't enough retail going on on Mercer Island and that there were so many vacancies and the type of retail we were getting in was, eh, it wasn't necessarily the kind of retail we wanted. So it's like, I would love to have this task force, but I would like it, I'd like the council to be very, very clear on what the goal of the task force is. Otherwise, I'm not sure what we're going to end up with. I don't want the task force to sit there and say, well, are we supposed to come back and recommend 10-story buildings? Because that way we'll get more economic development. Or are we supposed to come back and recommend box stores? Because we'll get more economic development. I think the council has to circumscribe this in a way that is very clear and say, what we're interested in is figuring out how to solve the retail problem. Because when all is said and done, that's what we've all been talking about, is we're not interested in expanding the business district into, you know, north of the parking ride like some people have claimed that we are. We're not interested in expanding the business district next to the thrift shop because there's, no one's talking about that. And we're not talking about rezoning property because that's, oftentimes, these task forces get into the question, well, should we start rezoning? Should we start, instead of four stories at the right age, should we let them go to five stories? And, because that's what our zoning now says. You know, instead of requiring mixed use in order to get five stories, should we allow people to go with a single use to get to five stories? You know, I don't think any of that is what we're talking about. I think all we're talking about is what do we have to do to have a vibrant retail sector in our town center? And if we can focus the task force on that, I'm all for it. This one, you know, if I was a member of this task force and I sat down at the first meeting, I would be very confused as to what my job was. And, but, and I mean, I think these are fine questions, but I don't think they're the questions I would ask personally.
Jane?
Well, I would like to piggyback on what Dan said because I think if you, if you read the background about this, a key element was, is promoting the downtown that we do have now. I think maybe calling it economic development is, signals the wrong thing. Maybe it should be called Town Center Committee. The idea is to get back a sense of community that a lot of people feel we have lost. How, how do we get that back? How do we promote our city? How do we get people to not just go north on Island Crest and get off at Bellevue Square, but to come downtown? It's more than, than economic development. I mean, it includes that, yes, how to promote the businesses that we do have, how to help our businesses. So I think the questions are right in general, but I think we need to explain to this committee what they're not supposed to do, which is consider, you know, zoning, rezoning, anything like that. It's basically how to revitalize the downtown that we have, how to get people walking downtown and how to get some community spirit is what we, we need. I would like to comment on the makeup of the, of the group and I think, you know, if it were to be set up like the Sustainability Task Force, it could handle this number of people, but they would need to be in subcommittees and work on very specific tasks so that there's not 17 people sitting around and talking in a room, but have specific tasks that they would do. I think the Sustainability Task Force model worked very well. I would question Island Vision being on there. Maybe it should be Island Vision slash the farmer's market. They certainly have an interest in our downtown. I think that there's a lot of categories listed, but local, small business owner, our, our business owners are underrepresented on this list, I think. So a couple of those. I'm not sure we need the Green Ribbon Commission. I don't know, but I would, I would keep it at 17 or so people, but I question some of the, it seems like having a broker, developer, leasing agent, but only one store owner is unbalanced there. I think we need to give some more attention to the, the business owners who are doing business now in our town center. So I think focusing on not just economic development, but promotion of our town center, promotion of Mercer Island, getting back a sense of community and promoting our town should be a focus.
I think it is important, you know, this notion of improving and increasing the vibrancy in the downtown, and it's both in absolute terms, but also in recognition of every single building that goes up represents X hundred people more who are coming into our community and have expectations of the environment in which they live and also an integration factor. So I also want it to be a sense of not a downtown and the rest of Mercer Island, but that we have an integrated, a raw organization, or organization, I should say, community. One of the questions that did jump out in my mind was that final bullet point, for example, that said, what is needed to attract office workers from larger companies? And all of a sudden, you know, that's when I started to wonder a little bit about what the boundaries of this were. I would also like us to continue some of the early discussions that we've had in the last year or two with other communities of our size in terms of what have they found to be best practices? What types of businesses have their communities welcomed and supported? Granted, we will not be Bellevue and I don't think anybody wants to be Bellevue, but sometimes we do quote or reference other small towns that we feel have either maintained or built upon their charm. I'm also encouraged by some of the sparks of new business that have been showing up recently. I believe there's two new restaurants that have been announced on the island. Let's find out why, you know, why and what and how. As far as the composition is concerned, I think, you know, Jane's made some good recommendations, some good notes. I think also that I would encourage us to include, quite notably, youth theater, particularly if they're looking at creating or generating a campaign around the recycle center, et cetera. So overall, I think it's a great idea. I think it does need to be more tightly scoped. It needs to be both Mercer Island centric, but also looking at some best practices that come from without and making sure that we do have some of those unique business and entrepreneurial people who reside on this island contributing.
Okay, I, I'm going to make a suggestion here, and I guess it sort of weaves together with... I'm going to make a suggestion here, and I guess it sort of weaves together with my own sense of things, and then look for council feedback on that. My, Mike, you had a first shot, do you want it, before I try and do that?
My first shot was asking a question.
I'm sorry. You go ahead and go, and then I'll come back.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, my take on this is, we're getting in an area where we don't need to get involved, where we're creating another level of bureaucracy. And in the end, we're going to produce a flyer about Mercer Island, which will cost a lot of money, is not necessarily, you know, to make the, we had the opportunity to make the area more business-friendly, to get rid of those vacancies, was by giving the business owners, the building owners, more flexibility, all the flexibility they needed to identify and bring in retail that would work without, I'm talking about the 46-year rule. You know, parking, we know that parking is an issue, and then we approved the legacy exception for parking that's going to make parking even more difficult for those folks, Councilmember Brown, that you were talking about, that go up Island Crest Way and take a right toward Bellevue. But the fact of the matter is, Director Corrigan's going to brief some pretty good sales number that shows that there's activity down there. And so, I really question the need to add another committee to study something and produce something that'll have what I don't think will be, will be marginal effect one. And a second thing is, we might want to think about the timing of this. You know, this is, sounds like it's going to be a long year, a one-year program. We've got different situations on the, on the council. We know that Councilmember Gray is going to get replaced by somebody, and Councilmember Sin has another position coming up. So, you know, if we started this now and then had a whole new composition on the council, you'd kind of be changing in midstream. So, it might be something that you want to table until the next year with a council that's going to be on station for two years.
Okay. So, thank you. Here's my suggestion. It's, I think this isn't quite baked yet, and the fact that Debbie wasn't able to participate gives me the opportunity to suggest, let's get Debbie, Tana, and I'm thinking Jane, because I heard some passion from Jane on this, together. So, we've got three members of council together with Terry and whoever else you care to join you, and have another, have another go-round at what you think about this before it comes back to us. And then, stepping down a level from that, I would suggest two things. One, I think Kristen will agree with me that when we did the Sustainability Policy Task Force, having a lot of people is really challenging. It's, it's hard, because people don't get that much opportunity to speak, and so it becomes tough. So, if you can tighten your list of participants, I think you'll, you'll serve yourselves well if you can get down to 10 or thereabouts.
Yeah. And just so you know, we were thinking there would be people who would cover three or four categories in one go, so we weren't looking at.
So, that's a bit of, you know, free advice, and then, free advice and worth every penny you paid for it. And then, the other is, and Tana and I started to talk about this before the meeting, but there's, there's the model of a task force, which would report back to council with some recommendations to council. There's also the possibility of what I might call a working group. And the model, it's not quite right, because it's a city entity, but there's the Arts Council, which, as we all know, is a tremendously hard-working group, whereas, so it's out there doing rather than feeding council with ideas. And it might make some sense to talk about putting together a group that doesn't report to council, but that does work with the chamber and the business community that actually goes and does some of these things. I don't know. I just, I put it out there as maybe part of what you think about as you're, as you're contemplating this. That's my suggestion. I see enough nods that I'm feeling like I probably have support for that. Anybody care to say, "No, that's completely the wrong way to go"? Okay? Scott, you're okay with continuing to shepherd that along?
I will arrange the meeting with three council members and Terry Martin.
Okay, very good. Okay, thank you. So, we'll set aside that item for now and move to Agenda Bill 4874. Thank you, Scott. Second Quarter 2013 Financial Status Report and 2013-2014 Budget Adjustments. Welcome back, Jim.
Good evening. Would you indulge me, since it's our first half? I usually give you the option of doing the two-minute spiel. Can we go through these slides? They'll go pretty quickly. It's good news, but there's some things I want to highlight for you. Is that okay?
Yep.
All right. We'll cover these areas, general fund, and we'll just focus your attention mostly on that. I'll call out just the water utility fund, not the super storm water. Touch on CAP, REIT in particular, and then budget adjustments are the item of business. There's a collection of those you've already seen, previously approved, just administratively. I bring them into an ordinance quarterly. Those are easy. Then there's a group of new ones with some special negative budget adjustments. I love those, because they are so unusual. Okay. Bottom line, first time since 2008, that's when we had our last general fund surplus, we will have a general fund surplus, revenue surplus, to be clear. I'm conservatively estimating about $785,000, split over 3% of the general fund budget. It probably will be more. What's it driven by? As you look at the first half of the year, we're at 51.5% of budget revenues. That's a good indicator. Two, development activity is significantly stronger than expected during the first half of this year. Why is that important? Because there's this lag between when people come and pay their permit fees, and when they actually go and do stuff to their property, their buildings, their houses, right? And so, there's a three-to-six-month lag that results in construction-related sales tax to the city. I expect construction-related sales tax, which is doing fabulously right now, to be quite a bit better even in the second half of this year. Also, that summer that we had seems to have ended, but the summer we had in June, July, and the first half of August, guess what? All you folks have air conditioners, you were running those air conditioners, mostly electricity, in some cases, that's gas-driven. Also, you were watering your lands. That results in utility tax revenues in the second half of this year to the city, in terms of fuselage energy, okay, electric and gas, and then the water utility tax. When you look at total revenues, compare actuals for the first half of this year to the first half of last year, it's up $727,000 or 6.2%. Why? Property tax levy, there's the 1% optional that's built in there, plus new construction. There's also the newly instituted 3.9% utility tax on the water, sewer, and stormwater utilities, and then development fees, because of development activity being so high. Expenditures. Usually, we are maybe 48% of budget, and so, we're a little bit higher, closer to 49% of budget through the first half of this year. The reason why we're not 48 is because of these unanticipated costs that we've incurred, unanticipated meaning not budgeted. So, there's been a spike in firefighter overtime. This doesn't happen very often, but it's happened this year, and there was three folks who had children, and they each took 12 weeks of leave, eth and away leave. That, we fill that, we backfill that with overtime, very costly, $117,000 right there. We've had some other outside legal costs in Katie's budget, that she's had to incur related to public repertory quests, labor issues, insurance, national program issues, that I'm using a little contingency chunk of change to cover and non-deportamental, but that was unexpected. Jail costs, we rarely exceed our budget. We've had a weird string of long-term incarcerations. The Snohomish County jail's much cheaper, but that's, they already, as of today, they're over budget. Also, this hasn't happened since when I first got here, back in 2005, but we are now, as of June of this year, paying the long-term care costs, unfortunately, for a retired left-wing firefighter, and those are expensive. I should mention, these last two bullet points, the spike in jail costs, we do have a jail reserve and a criminal justice fund. It's $79,000. It's meant to be tapped in the event that we've unexpected spikes in costs. I'm, I'm not ready to appropriate that yet. I'm hoping I can just absorb it in the general fund through expenditure savings elsewhere. I will know better when I show you the third quarter financial status report in November of this year. Also, on the left-wing long-term care costs, we have a reserve, a little over $1 million in the general fund. I'll come back to you. If we really need to appropriate it, I'm hoping to be able to absorb it. I think I can, but I'll know better come November, when I share with you the third quarter financial status report. The bottom line is, because of these unanticipated costs, we'll be very close to spending our entire expenditure budget by year-end. I don't expect any expenditure savings. Let me be clear, I don't expect any expenditure savings. However, I expect revenue surplus, okay? And for the benefit of the new council members, who haven't seen a revenue surplus in the general fund, the way the council has typically used that in the past is to fund one buildup reserves, okay? Fund capital projects, stuff like that, usually on time needs. And I'll be bringing you a list of funding needs, reserve funding needs, at the third quarter financial status report in November, which will include fully replenishing the contingency fund. Remember, you've appropriated $250,000 regarding the I-90, fighting the I-90 tolling planned by the state. We want to replenish that. We also need to get it up to its target level, that's an additional 90K. There is, based on what I'm projecting for revenue surplus, there is plenty to handle, getting various reserves up to where they need to be, not all reserves, but the ones that, in my view, are the most critical, okay? Plus a few other things. Again, this is good news. Sales tax, just point out, if you look at the fourth from the right, the end column there, the percent change 2013, there are four business sectors which are in double-digit growth, okay? Construction, retail, and wholesale trade, admin and support services, telecommunications, all with double-digit growth. Overall, and this particular table backs out what I refer to as extraordinary sales tax receipts, the things I can't tell you about, but they usually relate to purchases by island residents of stuff of, that results in sales tax to the city. And typically, in the past, we've seen 300,000 or 400,000, and it's associated with some kind of trust or something along those lines, but when I back those out, sales tax is really at 8.7% this year. That's good. I like that. Again, a reminder, look at construction sector, it's up 11.1%. I expect that number to go significantly during the second half of this year, because the development activity I mentioned earlier, that really jumped up in the second quarter of this year. Utility tax, overall, up 13.1%. Why? Primarily, it's the 3.9% utility tax on water, sewer, and stormwater, the city's utilities. That's where the biggest growth is. I always keep a close watch on electricity and gas, fuselage energy, that's down 0.6%. They're going, wow, how is that possible? We've had a summer. It's timing, timing only. Remember, June and July and August, all that, that revenue, we don't see that revenue until beginning in July. There's always a month delay in there. And so, that's already coming in, and we'll see that continue into next month, as it relates to August. Development activity, again, more bad news here. Building permits, we look at all building permits for single-family residential, multifamily residential, commercial, public, what am I forgetting? Oh, multi-use. Number of permits up 20.2%. Total valuation up 57.1%, really, really good. Single-family residential permits, this is what I use, this is our bread and butter for development, okay? And I treat this as a leading economic indicator for the city. This is what I hang my hat on when I look into the future. Total number of permits are up 33.6%. Total valuation, almost 79%. Holy cow. Doing very, very well. And again, I have the note here, I've already mentioned this earlier, there is a lag about three to six months for typical residential stuff. We have bigger projects, like the legacy project, that sales tax will come in over a period that exceeds a year, right? But for the typical projects, it's a three-to-six-month lag from when they pay their permit fees. Development activity, for the mayor's benefit, I added some graphs for you.
Thank you, Jim.
This is, because I do like graphs.
I'm simple. I like the little bars.
I thought this might, might be helpful. What I took is, I took development activity, in this case, it's single-family residential permits issued for the first, for the first quarter and the second quarter of the past three years, '11, '12, and '13. You can see for the first quarter in '13, it's higher than the last two years. The second quarter in the blue, again, significantly higher than the last two years. Gives you a sense of what's going on there. The next one, in terms of single-family residential valuation, again, look at that 2013, the green and the blue columns, significantly higher than the prior two years for the first and second quarter, doing very well. Utility funds, I don't want to call out one that's worth mentioning, that's the water fund. Water purchases, not surprisingly, because of the summer, are up 13.2% for the first half of this year. This will result in significant jump in revenues. Again, there's a delay from when you read meters and bill and get the revenue, right? That revenue started coming in basically in August, and so, we're seeing a significant spike in that revenue that will exceed what we budgeted for charges for services. What's great about that is that you get to use that for our greatest need, which is water infrastructure, capital projects. Also, remember, we sold our property owned by the water utility on the First Hill neighborhood, $1.9 million. I still, I just smile when I see that number. We did very well. Also, as a reminder, the council previously approved this. There was Seattle Public Utilities, SPU, one of their master meters, underred the amount of water coming to the island for a two-year period, June of 2009 through June of 2011. That finally got fixed in June, July of 2012, and then, as of May of this year, when we negotiated with the appropriate amount, it's $317,000. We've already cut the check to them, but the funding source was the First Hill Water Utility Property. REIT, really good news. Actual revenue is up 44.4% this year compared to first half of last year. Number of property sales, up almost 25%. Average sales price, up almost, up 11.4% to $965,000 for the first half of this year. As a result, France and I are forecasting, this, I wouldn't call this, we were talking earlier, a conservative forecast, but a realistic forecast, an additional $200,000 in REIT revenue over and above what's been budgeted for this year. I won't, I'll just briefly touch on these. You'll see in Exhibit 1, pages 24 through 26, Francie provided great highlights on these five projects, the Mercerwood Drive Water System Improvements Project, Luther Burbank Playground Replacement, which opened up this past weekend, Gallagher Hill Trail Solar Ray at the Community Center, nitty-gritty light installation in the town center. And Exhibit 2 of your Agenda Bill is the very detailed, those horse blankets that you unfold, project management report, has a little, very detailed description for every single, and brief description for every single project. One more thing. We weren't able to squeeze in the Mercerwood Drive Chip Seal Project into this financial status report. Clint was so busy. If you have not driven it or ridden your bike on it, go do it. I'm here to tell you, I've seen chip seal, you know, done before. I was talking to Clint today, he did an outstanding job. I know I'm just a finance guy, but for those who've seen chip seal before, where it's not black, it's like light gray, and you see the little jagged rocks sticking up, and you dread if you ride a bicycle that you ever crash, because you'll, you know, do serious injury. This is the smoothest, best done, I, I tell you, if, if.
You're getting like tucked out.
The highest compliment.
It's so beautiful.
It's spectacular. Look at it. Look how smooth it is. I want to get Mike Brady to go ride his bike on that. If I could find a way to get Clint to do my Streets of Northbound, which you're in horrible disrepair, I can't give him, I can't give him a higher compliment. He is fantastic. Go check it out. It's well-deserved. And also, you may have forgotten this, it was an experiment, and this is, I never think of Mercerwood Drive as an arterial, but it's a minor arterial, right? It really is. And he previously had been doing his experiments on residential streets, and Glenn gave me a little tour of those, as well as Mercerwood Drive last week. I think you'll find, this was an experiment that has gone very, very well, and the people will be very pleased. There was inconvenience, takes time for things to cure and stuff, but the final product, go check it out. Budget adjustments. This is the business before the council, and I'll just simply note, and I've got them here for you to reference if you have questions. The first group, I'm assuming you don't have questions on, because you've already approved these previously, okay? It's the new ones that you may have questions on, but before we get to those questions on budget adjustments, do you have any questions or comments regarding our financial status? Yes, ma'am?
Because I am new, and because I've never seen a surplus, as you rightly call out, yay, is the first statement. But the second one is, just sort of the question of policy, you refer, for example, to an overexpenditure in jail.
Yeah.
Due to some unfortunate incarceration time for somebody or somebodies. Why would we absorb those costs from the general fund if we have a contingency fund set aside?
I do it all the time, to preserve the reserves. If I don't have to spend them, if I don't have to appropriate them, I don't want. If I don't have to spend them, if I don't have to appropriate them, I don't want to. I want to preserve those reserves. This is how we've managed away through the recession, primarily is on the expenditure savings side. And so, there's always things where someone's over budget on some line item, and I'm able to cover it, if I can't cover it in the department, I'll cover it in someone else's department in terms of expenditure savings. It's just normal course of business.
Right, but see, you, I have to say, just I do start to get a little bit uneasy when you say from some other department, because each department, you know, does have a set of objectives and a budget, and...
It's usually position vacancy savings, that's the primary expenditure savings that I use. I'm not stealing money from them. This year is very tight.
Okay.
And I do have, let's see, did I, yes, I did mention it in the report, it so happens, and I expect, actually I'll be back to the council in November, there's $121,000 of, this is a very unusual case of a development revenue, permit revenue, from the folks who wanted to develop shorewright apartments, do some condos in there. There was a change in ownership, and the bottom line is they let their permit lapse. And so, that revenue now, which has been up to this point unearned, having booked it as revenue, we get to book it as revenue, and it's available as a general purpose revenue now. It's not, doesn't have to be dedicated to development costs. I anticipate having to come back to the council in November and saying, please, let's appropriate that so I can cover some of these unanticipated costs. Other questions? Dan?
So, the 785 does not include the 121, or is it...
That's correct, does not.
So, I have been on the council when we've had surpluses before, and it's something that, in the past, what we have done is put it into, oftentimes we called it a capital reserve, which those of us, some of us may remember that that's how we built the community center, without having to go for bond financing for that. But, so I'm, I'm very appreciative of the fact that we have the money, and do remember very fondly the days when we had a capital reserve and we could do some great things for the city with that money. So I, I'm a little bit, I get a little queasy though, when you say that you're going to come back to us in three months and tell us how we're going to spend that. All I would like to make clear, Chip, is that what I would be expecting in three months when you come back is that money to still be there?
Yeah.
And you don't come back to us and say that, well, we had this overage here, and this overage here, and we spent it, and so therefore we're going to backtrack on this thing. So, I mean, I think, I think it's wonderful, that 785, I would hope that with the 121, that takes you up to 900-something, that's conservative, we go north a million, but I would love to come back and fund the capital reserve, starting at the end of this year, so that future councils have the opportunities to do some really neat projects for the city.
Yeah, and Deputy Mayor Gels knows this, but for the benefit of the new members, you don't make a decision on what to do with the surplus revenue until next year. I'm just going to be highlighting needs, just to plant little seeds in your mind, so here are some of the needs, some of the reserves that you've tapped, that we need to build up, and just to plant those seeds, but there's no decision making whatsoever until next year. Usually, we don't close the books until about May of next year, so it'll be usually, usually in June is when we have, in the meeting with the council, decide what to do with revenue surplus.
Okay, other questions? Mike?
So, the reason, and I get to, I said this the first time we did an update, I'll say it again this time, and I'll say it two more times while we reference the prior year where we didn't have the tax increases, and you said it in the agenda packet, but you didn't bring it up too much on this presentation. Yes, there's the temperature issue, and more, people are using more water and everything, but the big reason why we have such a large surplus is because we linked and we raised taxes and tax rates and created new taxes. I could go down the list, but I'm not, it's good. So, effectively what we have is, we have a bigger pie and a larger slice of that pie, versus what we should have anticipated, that the pie would get bigger, but still maintain the same slice of revenue, i.e. tax it from that. So it's unfortunate, so that's, that's where that, that's where a lot of that surplus is coming from. And then plus 121, and we just talked about the 600K that we may relieve by, from the general fund, from the DSG. And not so much, I wouldn't want to see it go into a capital fund, because if we have capital projects, my, my policy or thought is that we should take that to the voters and develop a capital project that is good enough for the voters through a vote. What I would like to see, since we raised taxes when we really didn't need to raise taxes, i.e. the 780 surplus, and the 600 that we anticipate from DSG in additional taxes, we should look at a tax rebate, be that with property taxes, or utility rates, or something to that effect. So, there's two sides to every argument, I suppose, but I would like you, Mr. Director, to consider that perspective on what to do with the surplus also. Thank you.
Okay, before we go farther, I mean, so, a little bit of field, even farther afield, the question on the table is, are there any concerns with the budget adjustments that were already on the table?
I'm just fielding questions on the report itself before we get to budget adjustments.
Okay. So, Tana, you're up.
So, my answer is no, but just, I'm sure other people on the council also want to make sure that we don't just leave Councilmember Ciro's comments out there as if we hadn't, so you were talking about, we had a smaller pie, and bigger pie, and bigger revenue, but also, we had a, we cut many 9, 10, 11 FTEs, cuts in transportation projects, slowed down projects, postponed things, so the fact that we have a budget surplus is not indicative just of an increase in revenue, but also a serious cutback in expenses that we've seen over the past few years. So, before anyone in the community thinks that we are now, kind of our pie is so big because we've been spending so much money, or that we've been increasing taxes without cutting back, just want to point out that part of that is because we have cut back on so many full-time employees and so many services and projects, and so I just don't want that to be lost.
Anyone else right now, other, okay, so Chip, back to you.
Let me just clarify one thing, the surplus was really not generated by the 3.9% utility tax, a piece of it, because of the weather, which caused that tax to be higher than what I was projecting, but the tax itself, that was used to help balance the budget, and that does not create a surplus, just to be clear. Budget adjustments, can I, this is on Exhibit 3, page 37, is this the first table, these are the ones that previously approved by the council. I'm going to assume there's no questions regarding these, these should all be familiar? Yes, ma'am?
Just a quick question about the $100,000 for the work plan to oppose, propose tolling on I-90, is that 200,000 or that's 100,000 indicated in...
That's, in addition to the 150 that had previously been appropriated by the council.
Right, right, but it's not 200, it's, okay, 100,000.
100, you'd already, I'd already adjusted the budget for the 150 you had appropriated.
Great, thank you.
Okay, here's the remainder of the previously approved ones, two from, 1% for the arts fund. Okay, I'm going to move on to the new requests, the surprises. I don't want to bore you with detail, it's hard for me to boil this down in the way that a typical non-financial person can understand it, but I'll try. The good news is, these are, these two general fund, these are expenditure reductions, technically I don't have to do it, I like to do it just to be transparent and to get the budget closer to where it should be. Bottom line is, when we were doing carryovers from last year to this year in the general fund, we had about $49,000 left over that I recommended that we appropriate for miscellaneous professional slash legal services. In reality, my, our intent, as I, what I said there, because as a parenthetical, is we probably will go to the I-90 tolling issue. I don't really have $49,000, and I have a number that's $24,000 less than that, okay? And so this adjusts for that, the error was related to a revenue accrual, it was, there was an overaccrual, I won't bore you with the details, and that accrual related to last year results in me having to reduce the amount that I could carry over from last year. So it's a reduction in the amount, that's all. The second one is simply an accounting change, the general fund for gears has paid for, as an example, the insurance-related costs that relate to the utilities, the water, sewer and stormwater utilities. We decided, and the budget reflected this situation where the general fund pays for it, and the utility funds reimburse the general fund, we decided to just change the accounting practice on the advice of our auditors, and just directly charge it to the utility funds. This is a budget correction to reflect that change, that's all. And again, it's a reduction from the general fund's perspective, because we're direct charging the utility funds for those insurance costs. Pretty straightforward, non-controversial.
Okay.
We're reducing the budget. The next group.
We described in here, it's not really moving stuff out of the general fund, it's just an accounting change, it would have been charged back from the general fund to the utility fund anyway.
If the net result the same.
Right, I mean, it's because Mike has several times raised the point on how we're taking stuff out of the general fund, so this really isn't taking another 300 or 400,000 out of the general fund, as I understand this.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just removing the in-between step.
Right, that's, that's just, I understand, okay, thanks.
The new requests, we have four with YFS, the top three are grant-related, DSHS grant for, let's draw the line alcohol prevention campaign, $2,000, another DSHS grant for teens at risk video production costs, almost $10,000, King County grant for the teens at risk video production, $1,000, and then, those should be pretty straightforward, non-controversial. I'm hoping this one won't catch you by surprise, these last two related to the thrift shop, and when we brought the thrift shop to the council at your June mini-planning session, and then back at your July 15th council meeting, it was the study session on July 15th, as we took council feedback, that resulted in additional time for the consultant, and no more than an additional $10,000. And so this is just taking the money from the YFS fund, transferring it to the capital improvement fund, which is where we account for this particular project. That's it. Mike?
And this might be to the deputy city manager, the 100,000 for the I-90 tolling, is that to pay for bills that we've incurred?
Yeah, we've been incurring bills.
Yeah, we have, let me, so what, I think the total, the total budgeted amount for the I-90 tolling work to date is 275.
Correct.
You, you've made an initial appropriation of 150, this is to catch up with the extra 100 that you appropriated. So right now, we've spent all but about 50,000 of that 275. Largely, that's been on legal fees and lobbying fees.
I'd like to bring up to the council the approvals of allocating additional funds, whatever that might be, and that can be, and the purpose of that is to help on our communication of sending a message going forward. So not only have we spent this amount of money, but the council is very resolved in, in stopping tolling, and to that end, not only have we spent 360, but we've allocated 200 for future costs. And I think that's important, especially if you've heard on the radio, the governor's really leaning forward to another special session here in November. So I'd like to suggest that we allocate an additional 200, find an additional 200,000 to allocate, so that when we talk to our folks, we all have different folks that we're talking to, we can give that message, that we have the resolve and we have the money to continue pressure for our, for our best interests in stopping I-90 tolling.
Okay. So, within the context of what Chip's proposing in terms of budget adjustments right now, might I suggest that Noel's up next with a I-90 update for us, and perhaps we revisit this question as we do that, rather, or are you specifically proposing a change to the budget adjustments that Chip is asking?
Well, I'll ask Chip, I mean, is it, you've got new requests up here, what's the issue with putting a new request for $200,000 for opposing I-90 tolling?
We can't, but it's, it's actually more simply accomplished by what the mayor says, where you can just make your will known on the next agenda bill, you voted on it, I'll then bring it back for just the administrative hurdle of admitting the ordinance in November. But it would go into effect tonight.
Sure. But that does raise an interesting question, just for the sake of accounting. On page 27, one of the things you're asking us to do is to move money from the contingency fund to the general fund for that 100,000 that we, that we had authorized before. Given what you just told us, there probably is no need to move it out of the contingency fund anymore, since you've got ample money in the general fund already. So why should, why do, why do we want to take it out of the contingency fund at this point? Because you'll just tell us later on you want to put it back in the contingency fund.
You could do it that way, it's true, it's really just a matter of timing.
Yeah, because I mean, this appropriation is not to appropriate the money to spend that, the 100,000, we've already, we've already done that, this is to move it between funds, and right now, there doesn't seem to be any reason to do that.
Here's the thing, is if we didn't do this transfer, I still would need a $100,000 appropriation in the general fund, so you have to take the surplus revenues and appropriate 100,000 of that to replace it.
So, but it's basically, then all we do is, instead of changing the word, putting the word contingency in the first column, we change it to general, and then we just say, and just say, in the description, implementation of city's work plan to oppose proposed tolling of I-90, like you did up above, you took, you added, to say general fund, and then you just say, instead of, I'm looking at the previous...
Yeah.
I'm just, I just, you know, as a general matter of policy, we shouldn't be rating the contingency fund when we have no reason to rate the contingency fund. I'm the first to acknowledge, we told you to do exactly this a few months ago, but that was before you came in and told us you had $785,000 extra in the general fund. So, I mean, I just think as a matter of good policy, probably we should ask you to, we should amend that to just make clear, just we're appropriating the money, but it's in the general fund.
I'm not sure it's good policy versus bad policy.
It's not a big deal, we could do what the deputy mayor is saying, I guess my preference is to do what I've laid out here, reflecting council decisions, and I always like to save, again, the disposition of revenue surplus until next year. There isn't a right answer, you can go either way. My preference is what I've put before you.
Dan, you want to push that to a council decision, or...
Yeah, I mean, just like, thumbs up or thumbs down, and I mean, I, it's just, you know, we've moved up above in that same page, over $350,000. I mean, basically, all it would do, if you look at this thing, is, is, I mean, in fact, you could delete that third row and just send the line, additional funding for implementation of city's work plan, it's already there, it's 100,000, and take out the word interfund transfer. I mean, it just, you just put general fund.
Just delete the where, where's, there's the contingency fund gets deleted, and I amend the funding source.
Yeah, I mean, it's just, it's simple, it's just...
I understand.
I mean, then we don't rate the contingency for when we've got the money.
I can go either way, I'm easy, I really am, I'm easy.
Tana?
I guess I have a question about that. From a perspective of kind of tracking expenses and looking back at the budget in future years or future times, is it easier to, for people to see that what we spent on tolling, or fighting tolling, was, you know, from one fund, let's say the contingency fund, from one pot, versus saying, well, we took 200,000 from here, and 100,000 from here, and 100,000 from here, and so it's harder to track it, versus saying, if you look at the contingency fund, we took out 250 to fight tolling. Is it an easier message, and an easier explanation than having to, you know, kind of piece together the story of where the money came from?
Francie and I track individual budget adjustments separately, and so noting that this $100,000 was funded by adjusting various budget revenues, it gets called out on our end, we can easily track it.
I think it's usually the dollar value that's the impactful part, I appreciate the question.
Technically, you know, while I think 785,000 is a conservative estimate and a no-brainer, I can't book it yet, right? And that's why I prefer what I've put before you, it's not a done deal, it's not carved in stone, it'll be carved in stone at the year end, but it's, I can tell you, things are going swimmingly well. Could they turn and go south? Absolutely. But, and that's my hesitancy about maybe doing what, maybe... But, and that's my hesitancy about maybe doing what the deputy mayor has proposed, but it's, again, it's not wrong. It's, I'm okay with it. If you want to go that route, go that route.
All right, so Dan's asked the question of pull it from the general fund rather than the contingency fund. I'm looking for those who prefer what Dan has suggested, which is general fund. So one, two, three, four, five. Okay, you've got your direction from that, so pull it from the general fund. So, was there anything else?
I'll just need to amend the ordinance to reflect that action.
Okay. Do you need us to do anything different than in terms of motions right now?
Looking for Katie. Ally?
Ducked out.
I think if you just make the motion, you know, the second motion is to adopt ordinance 1309, amending the 2013, 2014 budget with the correction of, and then just make the statement of the change of the funds.
So I would, if it's okay.
Yep.
I will move to adopt ordinance 1309.
Let's go with the suspend first, I think.
Sorry. Move to suspend city council rule of procedure 5.2 requiring a second reading for an ordinance.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. opposed.
Move to adopt ordinance number 1309, amending the 2013, 2014 budget with the one change that the $100,000 for the work plan, the city's work plan to oppose proposed tolling of I-90 be funded out of the general fund rather than the contingency fund.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. opposed. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are you guys okay with doing Noel's report? Keep on going. A bit desperate for a break. Move to agenda bill 4867, status report on city work plan to oppose I-90 tolling. Welcome, Noel.
Good evening, Noel Tree, deputy city manager. Let me just find my presentation. Great. Well, I think it's been a couple of meetings since you had the pleasure of such a presentation, so I'm sure you're all very excited. It's been a quiet period until actually just the last couple of days, we've had a few things happen. As you might have seen in an email that I sent to the public and to council this afternoon, we've had a couple of new things announced and I'll talk about those. So we'll do the status report and then I'll take any questions that you've got. So first, as we mentioned a little bit earlier in tonight's meeting, the state legislature is looking at a, it's sounding fairly likely at this point, we're hearing it from both legislators and the governor, that there's going to be a transportation, a special session focused only on transportation funding in November or perhaps maybe December. I think they're talking about maybe a one-day session. Leading up to that, the senate is conducting a series of listening tours across the state where they're soliciting public input about what kind of funding people will support, what priority projects should be. In the email that went out today, and it'll be added to our website tomorrow, will be links to get more detailed information about those listening tours when they're being held, what the locations are. And then finally, the steering committee has been in discussions and I've been talking with our lobbyists to develop some strategy as we head into this special session and looking at opportunities for us to maybe find alternative funding sources instead of tolling. On the WashDOT environmental study side, as was included in your packet, we recently submitted a letter to WashDOT arguing for them to be sure to do a broad enough scoping process for this EIS as well as to be sure to look at alternative funding mechanisms. Part of the impetus for that letter was that we had some discussions with WashDOT in which we were, we were getting the sense that they were trying to take a very narrow focus and not really look very closely at alternative funding. So we wanted to just be sure to get on record that we thought that the state legislation required them to take that broad look. They announced today that they are launching their EIS scoping process starting October 7th through November 6th. As they did with the EA process, they'll have a website set up for people to submit comments online. People can submit comments by mail and then they're going to have another series of public scoping meetings where people can come and provide comments. Right now, they have three meetings planned, as indicated on my slide. The Mercer Island meeting is going to be on Monday, October 21st, 4:30 to 8:30 at the Mercer Island High School. What WashDOT tells me is they've picked the high school so they've got more capacity than last time. You might remember the community center didn't quite work out. We had way more people that wanted to attend that couldn't because of the capacity of the room. They're also been in discussions with us and I'm meeting with them next week to get more detail about the exact, the actual format for this meeting. My understanding is they want to provide a better opportunity for citizens to come and have an opportunity to speak. There wasn't a lot of opportunity for that when they did the EA meeting, so they're trying to set it up so that people are able to do that and have a little bit better chance to do that.
So what scoping?
This is the?
What do we want our citizens to tell?
Well, in the EIS scoping, what we want to be sure is that they look broadly at the potential impacts of tolling I-90, which is congestion around the entire lake, which is broader than what they had thought about during the EA. And then, and then very importantly, we want the public to convey to WashDOT what alternatives, what funding alternatives they would support instead of tolling, because that's supposed to be another key component of this study.
So the last meeting we had at the community center, many of the citizens talked about how tolling would affect them.
Yes.
We don't want our citizens to say that again?
No, they should, they should, they should still convey what the impacts will be too because the EIS needs to both document what the impacts would be if they go with tolling and then also needs to, in a much more detailed way, look at what the alternatives are.
So how are we going to tell that to our citizens, those three things that they need to do?
So we will be sending out, as these dates come near, we will be sending out additional information as will WashDOT. WashDOT's looking at whether they do an all-island mailer or not, without, what to expect in this process. Our website and the WashDOT website will have information about the process and so that's how we hope to help get the word out.
Okay.
Sure. And I'll note that this is a council meeting night as well, so we're going to recover the planning schedule, have to talk a little bit about how we're handling this.
That was exactly my point, is that we could just?
Good point. I hadn't taught that yet, so I.
Yeah. Take note to record that.
So I guess here's the question. I think we saw the opportunity to probably, hopefully find a different date. Maybe that's something I ought to try and work on right away and see if we can come up with an alternative.
Or maybe we have it till a late start time, very late.
We could either do that or they could change, we could change.
Yeah, but let's make sure that we're not on the collision course.
Okay.
Mike, did you have the same thought or were you on some?
Yeah, good catch.
We're going to come back to the EIS and the details in your presentation, or should I address that now?
No, I mean, if you want to mention something about the EIS, now would be the time.
Yeah, to piggyback off of Mike's comment in terms of, so what do we want to bring to the table for these meetings whenever that they are going to be scheduled? And I'm going to suggest that we schedule a study slash work session with the council soon, because what we don't want to do is have, and you've heard me say this before, we don't want WashDOT to drive this train. Because as we've seen, they're going to try to narrow the scope as much as they can. The purpose and need is going to be very narrow and that's not what we want. We want to expand it as much as we can. We want them to look at everything. We want them to look at any kind of financing you can think of. And there's a whole list of analytical things that quite frankly need to be done in order to put all the pieces together. For instance, excuse me, look at various scenarios for tolling or other options and how does that impact congestion, not only on our Niantic but across the region? How does that impact greenhouse gas emission profiles? How does that impact public health? And a whole litany of other environmental and health-related issues that are tied into this. At first glance, were not seemed to be tied into this question, but again, it's really critical on what the purpose and need is upfront and what the scoping that we want them to do as opposed to what they're going to tell us they want to do. That then brings in other players. And we've talked about this briefly, like for instance, bringing in the Environmental Protection Agency as a cooperating agency in the EIS process.
Yeah, that, that I'm going to talk about here and just said, but I'm on board with what you're saying. And of course, our plan, as we did with the EA, where I thought we, with our legal council, put together a pretty good letter talking about the impacts that we thought needed to be studied in that process, as well as arguing for an EIS instead, which ultimately we now have. We will be working closely with our legal council in submitting our comments on this scoping process. And then part of the question for council will be, you know, in what ways do you want to weigh in to that, that letter? I think in, when we did it the last time around, the, I think it was, some members of the steering committee weighed in and helped edit some of that letter before we submitted it. And so we can, we can talk about what the appropriate process is to engage council in drafting that letter. Now, the only, the only thing I will say is you mentioned a study session and some of this work and some of this strategizing with legal council in particular may be subject to attorney-client privilege, may not necessarily be the type of thing we want to have in a public discussion. So that is a consideration.
Yeah, and I was going to bring that up too, because, you know, hand in hand with this is we have a legal strategy that we pursue with both federal highways and the state.
Right, because part of this is if we, if we ultimately see WashDOT proceeding in a way that's contrary to the mandates in the state legislation or contrary to NEPA requirements, then that, that could become a matter of litigation at some point. And that might be part of what we talk about and how we tee up our letter. So I'd be, I'm a little leery of a, of a study session where we try and hash that out. But perhaps maybe the mayor and I can talk and come up with a game plan as to how to engage with parts of council, because obviously, because of the Open Public Meetings Act, we can't, we can't have a quorum drafting this letter, but we can engage less than a quorum and give some counsel to. Our legal council is, they helped us put this together.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. All right. And then going on coalition building, we received a letter last week that King County and PSRC have asked federal highways for permission to use some existing grant funds that the county holds that they haven't spent to support a regional tolling study. So that would line up with the regional study that the mayor's letter requested, so we think that's good news. I'm meeting with PSRC staff this week to start talking about what their study might look like. This will be our first real opportunity to hear directly from their staff what they have in mind and where they think this might be going.
Noel, can we have some input in that as well? Because I have a similar concern on the PSRC tolling study.
Yeah, and I will come back to you to gather some input. This, this meeting is really them asking us questions about our last letter to WashDOT and PSRC and them starting to tell us, here's kind of what we think. But we are going to have, we're going to have additional rounds of correspondence with them before they nail down a study plan. So I don't, I don't know that this would be the meeting for that advocacy, but this is the first time we will have met and, but I do think your input on this is important.
Yeah, and again, just for other members of the council, my concern here is, again, they can narrow the scope and they can do a cut and paste exercise with their 2040 plan and say, you know, the game's over and, you know, this is all going to be really easy. But the fact of the matter is there are a lot of significant infrastructure issues that we need to raise with PSRC and this whole idea of tolling everything everywhere all the time, which quite frankly is not realistic. So this gets us into now is tolling real and if it is, how much is it going to cost? So what's the cost benefit ratio of doing so and how much revenue can you expect to gain versus other finance mechanisms? So that we have all of that on the table so that not only PSRC, but also our delegation and the state legislature has a clear understanding of, okay, if we're going down this pathway of quote tolling everything, can we in fact even do that? How much is it going to cost? What kind of revenue do we expect to obtain versus all of these other much easier finance mechanisms?
Yes, and I think it will be important for us to convey that to PSRC and we, we will do that.
Debbie?
Question regarding PSRC and the study. Who actually within PSRC is conducting this study? Is this the transportation committee? Is this a new team that's being?
No, it wouldn't be. The committee may oversee it. The committee is composed of elected officials. This would be PSRC staff with whatever consultant help they decide they need and I, and that's part of what I don't know yet and what I, part of what I hope to find out when I sit down and talk with them. I think because they've been trying to solve, how do we pay for this? I don't know how far along we've gotten in terms of how much is going to be their internal professional staff versus consultant work.
Yeah, because?
But they, they have technical experts on, who work at PSRC, who are experts in transportation analysis and, and they contract with firms to supplement that. So that would be, who would be doing the analysis, but I think they'll probably be reporting to the transportation committee.
Because that's where my interest lies, is those are elected officials and obviously elected officials from different geographies. And I think the extent to which, I think as council member Grady has alluded, that there's some degree of influence, it would be helpful for us to understand what that influence would be and the direction they might prefer to see attained.
Yes, but what I should be clear, what I should be clear to say is I don't know, I don't know for sure that's going to be the way they organize. That, that part is still a little bit unclear, in part because I understand the grant money they're using is actually King County's grant money. So King County and PSRC teamed up to make this funding request. How that then plays out in terms of who, who's in the driver's seat, county versus PSRC and how they, how they structure themselves to govern this is something I still need to find out, but I'll let you know. On the federal issues front, we're meeting with the regional EPA administrator September 10th to convey our concerns about the NEPA process, to ask them to provide some close oversight to make sure that public health and air quality and a number of other environmental concerns are adequately considered. EPA does have a role in overseeing other federal agencies and state agencies in the NEPA process, so this, this is an appropriate ask to make. So we have that meeting coming up.
Noel, and you and Mike?
Grady?
No, it's, that's Noel and Noel.
No, let me complete the sentence. You and Mike Grady and I, I'd like to have a meeting before we get to that.
Yes.
And we.
Yeah, and we've been.
My schedule's a little bit tough, but we need to get that set up, so.
Yeah. And then finally, on public information, we're continuing with our email updates as you saw today to make sure we keep people updated as stuff happens. So that's all I've got. Any more questions?
Sorry, do you want me to, Mike and then Jane?
And then Tana.
On this letter from Bill Chapman, which is a very firm letter, I compliment you on that. And FHWA is so instrumental in stopping tolling, why aren't we CCing the federal folks?
If they, if they weren't CCed, I'll double check on that because they should have gotten a copy. I don't know.
When you say the federal, the politicians?
Yeah, well, let me, let me follow up with, with our attorneys and make sure that we get that out. I think it got out to Adam Smith's office and Dave Reichert's office and, but let me make sure it went to federal highways as well.
Jane?
Oh, just a comment. Things have been kind of quiet on the I-90 tolling front over the summer and even in the spring. And I would hope that the people who showed up at the community center meeting, the hundreds of people who came, will pay attention to the scoping meeting and turn out and not just sit back and think the city council or the city of Mercer Island can handle this on its own, because I think it's real important that lots of citizens turn up to testify personally and hopefully this time people will be able to speak to let, let, let WashDOT know how tolling will affect their lives and their businesses. So I would just hope we really get the word out.
Yeah, that's a great point. That's a great point. We will, we will get the word out. And actually, I got a couple of emails today from citizens in response to my email saying, well, I already commented once, do I need to do it again?
Yes, come back.
I wrote back and said, yes, please do.
Thanks.
Yep.
So my point was to, to further, council member Broms, that maybe we should look at reaching beyond our usual suspects of the email list and do we want to think about doing kind of that postcard or Mercer Island reporter ad or something similar to what the schools did on their listening tour?
Yeah, now, and WashDOT is looking at an all-island mailer, I know, so that is, and I have a meeting with them on Monday to talk about that as well as to talk about what other ways this needs to be publicized. So as we learn more exactly about what they're going to do, we can then plan what we need to do to supplement that. But certainly getting something in the reporter and on the patch and our website and then considering a mailer is, yeah, definitely. considering a mailer is, yeah, I definitely, we should look at that.
Dan?
So that's an interesting question, because obviously islanders not only went to the public session at the community center, but more importantly, there were hundreds of comments put onto the website, or letters, or emails. As a legal matter, can we ensure that those are incorporated into the new scoping process? So for those people who don't happen to repeat their comments a second time, they're, because, I mean, under the law, if, if, they have to basically consider every comment that is, that is provided. So if, if we're, if there's a way of maybe talking to, to counsel and see if there's some way we can ensure that just as a matter of automatically, everything that has been stated before is already included, so they have to consider it even if someone doesn't happen to repeat the same thought a second time.
Okay, that's a good, that's a very good question, and we'll follow up on that. Unless, Katie, do you know the answer offhand?
I think that there's a variety of ways that we can handle that too, just even in terms of gathering all that together and putting in it to a package, as we've sometimes brought comments to you, or we've provided those to state agencies when there's been comment-
I mean, that's an excellent idea. We could, we could make-
We could, we could create that package.
We can create that whole file and then just provide it and just, so.
Yeah, they, at the, at the end of the EA process, they did produce an EA comment report that captures a lot of the commenting, so we can send that back to them and say, here's this too.
To even become the originator.
Don't forget about it, yeah.
Re-flagorize the-
Well, then, just, we just make sure all of a sudden-
It's part of the official record.
-all of a sudden comments are made a second time.
And people are, should be, feel free to make a new comment and-
Yeah, make a new comment and, you know-
-show up and make a new point and rewrite their letter.
Because, I mean, in some ways, it's almost more important to make the comment on the website or in, in a letter than, than even in the public, than making the public statement, because there is a written, then you got a written record of what was said, and it's there. That what's, the, the public thing is, it, it makes everyone feel good that they've, they've made sure and, and let DOT know how angry they are, and that, that's important at one end. But from a strictly legal standpoint, it's even more important to get a detailed statement into the record that they have to respond to.
Right.
So the emotion is one thing, but from a legal standpoint, it's more important that you submit it in writing-
Right.
-on the website.
Right, and one of, and one of the important differences in the EIS process as compared to the EA process is, the state has to respond to the comments received. I mean, they can do it in a somewhat generalized way, but they can't, they can't just leave comments unresponded to. So there's, their, comments are more important in the EIS process, much more important.
Mike Grady, and then Mike's here.
Two points. One, if somehow in this communication piece, we can get out to the public, yes, definitely come out, but also come up with ideas, as opposed to just the emotion and the complaint. Because the other nuance with the EIS is, the more alternatives, the more analysis you throw out there, they've got to do that analysis, and they've got, and if they don't, they have to demonstrate why they did not.
Right, right.
And then the other point too, is to what extent people can reach out to their neighbors in neighboring communities and bring them to the meeting, that is very powerful. So that's just not Mercer Island-centric, even though, yeah, they are going to Bellevue and Seattle, but I think to what extent, you know, people from Renton and, and Kent and, you know, other jurisdictions can come to this meeting, that sends a very strong message as well.
Mike?
I was just going to say, I agree with what has been said, but if you put that packet together, I think if you would list the names of, of the folks whose letters that you have, our citizens would appreciate that, that indeed that their letter is resubmitted. That's one. And two, are you going to talk about your budget going forward?
Yeah, let me just mention that. So here's, here's where we are on the budget. As you know, from a moment ago, the total appropriations towards this work to date are $275,000. We've spent about $225,000 of that. In, in talking with legal counsel and our lobbyists, I think the remaining $50,000 is probably just enough to get us through this next, at least the special legislative session, as well as most of the way, if not all the way, on a, a good comment letter to the EIS scoping process, which would have us, in, in terms of just a need for funding for, for next round of work, I would probably be coming back to you with a budget report and a request later this fall.
Can we ask you a question, Mr. Mayor? So we're, we're gearing up to the special session here, and everybody's talking to folks they have relationships with. Do you see any utility having, instead of just $50,000, maybe a $250,000, nice round quarter million dollars in which to document our resolve?
I don't, I don't know that we, that we need it right now. I mean, I think we can, I think we've got, we've got good professionals in place on our team, and I think we've got the money at this stage to pay them to do the work we need them to do. So I don't, I don't think we need an appropriation for just a bit longer.
Just as we're encouraging people to come to the EIS meetings, is there any benefit to encouraging people to go to the listening tour meetings where they're looking for people's interest in alternative revenue sources?
Yes, and we have to be a little careful with that, because as city government is not allowed to conduct what the PDC calls indirect lobbying of the legislature, so we cannot use city resources to communicate with citizens and say, go advocate for X, Y, or Z bill, or policy proposal at the state legislature. So we have to be a little, we can advertise that the sessions are occurring, which I did in my email today, but we are constrained in our ability to, to try and encourage our citizens to go with a particular message to talk with legislators.
Just help me understand, so for instance, AWC is a, you know, entity of cities that would lobby for interests of cities.
Yes.
How is that different from what we're talking about here?
Well, they're, they are a, a separate entity. They're not a government entity themselves, and they are lobbying on the behalf of their own members. The, the PDC draws the line between having cities use city resources to try and encourage citizens to lobby the state legislature, as opposed to cities having an organization where the city is lobbying for city interests. So just, just as we as a city can go and lobby, a group of cities can get together and go and lobby. But under PDC rules, we can't use city resources to try and say, hey, citizens, go advocate for, against this bill or passage of this new proposal, so.
Okay.
It is one of the rules that we, we face.
Okay. Mike, you've put forth a suggestion. Do you want to pursue that?
Well, I, I kind of, I appreciate Noel, what you said, but I respectfully disagree. I like, you know, we're definitely going to take this into past $50,000. And having a quarter million dollars allocated to that endeavor, I think it gives us more cred on the street that we're going to see this thing through, not only to the end of the year for the expenses that you anticipate, but into 2014, which we know it's going to go to 2014. You know, I, you're privy to a meeting I'm trying to arrange. You know, I'd like to have that in my back pocket, that we've allocated a nice, clean, round quarter million dollars to take us forward for the next six to eight months, however long it might be. So I would, I would ask the council to entertain allocating another $200,000. That would give us a, a bank of $250,000, $250,000 to see this thing well into 2014.
Okay, other input on that suggestion? Dan?
You know, I, I appreciate your sentiment, but the reality is that most other localities think $250,000 is chump change. It may be significant to Mercer Island, but it really doesn't mean anything to Seattle or Bellevue or King County, or definitely doesn't mean anything to the state of Washington. And, and to be honest, if, if, you know, Chip goes swaggering in there and says, I got a quarter million dollars in my back pocket, they're going to just sort of look at him and say, and why are you telling us this? And this is Mercer Island trying to say, we, you know, we're, we're rich over here, and we can, we can, we can beat you with our money. I, I don't think that's, we're, we're trying to create a cooperative attitude with, with the other local governments, and ultimately with the state, to try to, to try to find an alternative to, to tolling. I, I don't think we serve our best interest by trying just to go in there and, and with a fat billfold and, and say, we're Mercer Island, we got lots of money, and you better be scared of us. That, that's just not going to get us where we want to get to.
Debbie, then Jane?
I think I'd echo some of those sentiments, both in terms of the absolute dollars, but then also the principle of this is a fight or a discussion of policy that we're trying to pursue on a region-wide basis, and the extent to which we walk in with a specific dollar figure. It can be taken as either threatening and, and, you know, a reasonably affluent community trying to throw their weight around, or it could be seen as, you know, fairly small sum of money. The other point being, I think we all recognize that whether it's $250,000, more or less, the council's quite resolved to do what needs to be done to stop the tolling itself. So let's take the dollar value off the table, and I'd say, continue to pursue, you know, a position of strong resolve, but also a position of strong partnership with our fellow communities. So I would, I would not advocate putting a specific sum of money in a very public marketing campaign at this point.
Jane, and Mike?
I was going to agree as well. I think we should be pay-as-you-go. I, I think we have credibility because we are committed, and we've shown and spent money already, and I, I think it's prudent to just, to fight the fight and pay it, pay as we go, but not have a bankroll out there. But we know we have money available and the will of the council to push it through, so, so be it.
Mike?
I'm not a big fan of a total amount, but I'm a huge fan of getting back to the details and letting our citizens know that these are specific issues that we want WashDOT and federal highways and others to analyze before they go any further. And then if you can put dollar amounts to those, that's even better. So, you know, it's not unlike putting a bond or levy package together, in that the more detailed, the more it looks like we've done our homework, then I think that our credibility goes way up, as opposed to a total, total dollar amount. And it may, you know, we'll probably spend more than a quarter million dollars. But in addition to that though, this gets back to one of federal council members' comments about CCing, and Noel and I have talked about this before. We had by design retained certain legal firms, as well as are looking to bring on experts to look at traffic analysis, water quality, air quality impacts, a whole array of various tools are at our disposal, that I think we should now start to put those individuals on sheets of paper, and then CC our delegation, both at the state level and the federal level, and continue to CC federal highway administration and WashDOT, to let them know that we're, we're continuing to do the homework. And we're not only identifying money in order to fund it, but we're also identifying discreet issues that we know are going to be critical to this local, regional, statewide discussion. So by doing that, it really kind of, it, it not only expands the scope and need, but it also expands it statewide, so it gets the governor's attention, and it gets certainly WashDOT's attention.
Can you be more specific what you're talking about?
Yeah, for instance, you know, if we wanted to bring on a firm to do traffic modeling, and we have various scenarios, four or five alternatives we're looking at for tolling and other alternative financing mechanisms, if we modeled those various scenarios, and we were able to show that using a particular finance mechanism, congestion actually is relieved, and we don't have greenhouse gas emissions, we don't have the air and water quality impacts, public health, et cetera, we are on the side doing essentially WashDOT's work, and then we're feeding it to them and federal highways and EPA, saying, you know what? These alternatives are far more attractive. And, and note this term of our least environmentally damaging preferred alternative, because at the end of the day, what federal highway administration is going to need to sign off on, in concert with, I'm hoping, the Environmental Protection Agency, is what is the least environmentally damaging alternative? And if we can identify that for them, or at least lead them down that path, then we have a really good chance of winning this battle, as opposed to discussion. It'll be a discussion along the way.
Okay. Mike, I, I think without going farther on discussion, the, the idea of putting aside money right now looks like it's going down, so are you comfortable with?
I'm not comfortable with that, but I understand that's the way the democratic process works.
Okay. So let's, let's let that one lie for right now.
It seems like Mike had another action item.
So we, we can head off into that topic if there is a desire to, to head there. Tana, I'm going to let you go, and then we'll come back to that.
Just further, Councilmember, Councilmember Grady's comment. Is the, is that duplicative with what we want PSRC to be doing? I'm just trying to think, is that, trying to wrap my head around Mercer Island doing alternative tolling and other financing modeling versus what we want PSRC to do versus what we want the EIS? And I'm trying to think if that is really where we're trying to help PSRC go from a regional look versus from Mercer Island doing that work?
Yeah, it could be, and that's why I asked the question, Noel, of what's the scope of the PSRC study? Because there will be, they don't have a limited, they don't have limited capabilities. So understand that going in, they're going to be able to look at certain alternatives, but not all of them. And I think to what extent we can, either in some study session or some way, come up with a list in sitting down with our experts and fellow council members. Okay, what really are the alternatives and the metrics and the analysis that we want to see done, either by WashDOT, federal highways, EPA, and/or PSRC and their associated contractors? And if they're not able to do that, we should, one, be able to, to monitor what they're doing, so we have a clear understanding of what's going on. So when the results come out, we have the ability on hand to be able to, you know, look into the data and understand the modeling, and be able to ask, you know, legitimate questions. But two, there'll be gaps, and those gaps, if they're not filled, we should be able to fill those with experts that we can bring onboard, so that those discussions aren't lost because there, quote, wasn't enough time, or WashDOT or PSRC didn't have the funding to do it.
That makes sense?
So Noel, I'm going to swing back to you as the chief strategist on this for us. Thoughts on how you would suggest we take what Mr. Grady's putting out there and do something to begin to evaluate how we move forward?
Well, why don't we, why don't we have the meeting that you were talking about with the three of us, starting to talk in a little more detail about how we might go about that? It has always been on our plan to bring in potentially the traffic analysis and economic expert to help at least look over WashDOT's shoulder once they start the study, to advise us of any major gaps or alternative analysis that we ought to look at. What we haven't really talked about is doing our own full-blown analysis ourselves as an alternative, because that, that is a fairly expensive proposition. So I mean, but that, but we can, as a strategy, look at that as one, one approach.
Mike, are you okay with starting there? And then let's, and then I, you know, I'll circle to the steering committee, and we'll try and figure out where to go from there.
Okay.
I guess we're all right with that. Jane?
Question, I'm just wondering, as I understand it, part of the EIS, WashDOT would do a, a survey of employers on the island and businesses on the island. Do you know if they've done that?
That's what, no, they haven't done it yet, but that's what they've previously told us would be part of their study.
Still upcoming.
Yeah.
Okay.
I hear silence, I think that means we're done with this issue. Thank you very much for your report. Thank you, councilmembers, for all of your engagement on this one. We're going to move to other business, councilmember absences. Al, Katie, do we need to do anything since Councilmember Grady came late? Or are we okay with just, what do we do? Nothing? Okay, that was easy. I liked nothing.
Just the, the motions that he wasn't here for, we'll just say that he was absent.
Okay.
So.
Very good. I think, Jane, you had upcoming absences.
Yes.
So let's get those on the calendar.
I will be absent October 21st, and I'm realizing I'm going to be absent for the joint meeting with the school district and the November 4th meeting.
Noel, you've got all that? Okay. Anything else upcoming that we're not yet aware of? All right. Planning schedule. Noel?
Yeah, I think the, I know you, the mayor and Rich have had some discussions about balancing out the planning schedule lately, and I think one of, one of the main things I want to point out, because I don't think it was on your last planning schedule, is that we are planning to bring the solicitor ordinance issue back on October 7th. that we are planning to bring the solicitor ordinance issue back on October 7th.
Yeah.
And it's on there now, but it wasn't in your, it wasn't on the, the last version you saw, so I just wanted to highlight that.
Okay. And I've, I just, I guess from a standpoint of absences, to be aware, I will be gone from September 6th, 16th meeting, so. So, that's it, planning schedule-wise? Mike, you got something?
Other items to be scheduled, and this is a reoccurring theme, is the Sound Transit brief that they owed us the first quarter of this year. If that anything, at least put it down as other items to be scheduled. The Sound Transit brief that I'm talking about is the transition, what's that?
The Center Roadway.
Well, it's going from R-8A, skipping that R-8A, and R-8A-10, what would it be called? R-8A plus two, skipping that and going straight to R-8A.
The issue is, the issue is when they're gonna take back the Center Roadway. And they promised us to come back and talk to us again about their schedule for taking back the Center Roadway, because we told them last time that what they are proposing was a nonstarter. So...
They have, but we have also discussed that it potentially muddies the waters with our whole conversation regarding I-90 tolling to get them in earlier, and...
Yeah, but it's still, at some point, we...
It should be on the list of other items to be scheduled, for sure.
Right, but, and it's just, I mean, right now, their schedule is to take back the Center Roadway in 2016, if I recall. And if we, for lack of a better pun, if we let them get too far down the road here, we're just gonna be, they're gonna tell us it's a fait accompli, and that'll be seven years of no access to the Center Roadway, which is a disaster. So, that's almost as bad in many senses as, as tolling for, for a lot of people, and that we're gonna have a parking lot out there if we don't deal with that quickly. So, I mean, that's something, we gotta get them back at some point.
All right, we'll, we'll put that on the other items. Okay. Tana, you have something on this?
Yeah, we've talked about it a few times before, but with the Sound Cities Association, there are a lot of board openings coming up. That now is the time for us as a council to discuss if anyone's interested in serving on any of those, and there might be some very relevant ones to our recent discussions tonight that we might wanna pursue in, in getting a Mercer Island representative to, to submit a nomination to those boards. So, I don't know if it's more an offline conversation versus a scheduled one, but I think it's definitely something that we haven't quite figured out the right time to discuss, SCA policies and, and things. So, I don't want to do that.
I'm looking over this one, because Debbie's asked the same question of me about PSRC. And what I would, can I suggest that both of you, any of you who are participant on boards, can we flow this information through the city manager's office, or Noel, and then it get disseminated back out to councilmembers with staff's insight into usefulness, applicability, knowledge of, of whether the time is well spent?
Yeah, I think my, my problem would be actually how very little I do know.
And that's why I'm saying, because staff should be able to, even though we're going in...
I want very little to flow, so, yeah.
But, but just getting the fact that the, the opening is there to staff, and then we'll ask staff to do a bit of research to figure out whether, historically, this has been a useful place to be or not. Seems to me the place to begin. Yes. I don't know. That, that seems to me probably the right way to do this, rather than councilmembers trying to glean the, the value. Okay, thank you for that. Board appointments, we have none. Councilmember reports, Mr. Grady?
Yes, I just want to make sure the chief and the fire department will be down at Luther Burbank on Saturday and Sunday.
Yes.
So, I won't steal your thunder about Saturday, but something's happening on Saturday. She's gonna mention that. And on Sunday, I will need you once again, as I'm pretending to swim in Lake Washington. Hopefully, I won't really need you.
Bring it, bring it.
No, it's the...
Swim across America's on Saturday.
Saturday.
And you escape from Alcatraz.
Escape from Iraq on Sundays, yes, to the Mercer Island triathlon. And I'm doing both, by the way. Good luck to you.
Okay. Yeah, well, good luck on Sunday. I'll see you Saturday, Swim Across America's Saturday, which is great. But, even more importantly, Luther Burbank, the playground did open, I believe, this weekend, went this afternoon. You know, immense improvement, I think would be an understatement. But, again, I just wanted to call out the incredible work that was done by MIPA, by the Parks Department, by so many people in the community who donated their time and effort in so many different ways. It's an absolutely incredible play area. It's not even done. Particularly touching to me is to see some of the accessibility improvements that have shown up already. And if you haven't gone yet, do go. I know we're waiting for the final date for the official opening, but it, it is truly an even more special place on Mercer Island. So, that's, that's great. I think that's it for my side.
Okay. Jane?
Well, I went to Luther Burbank today, too, and there were tons of kids playing. And the, the rubber floor is wonderful. It's, it's just great. I can't wait to see all the pavers put in and everything opened. There was an Arts Council meeting on the 14th of August, and kind of tying in with that, a committee was selected to do the artist selection for the, the tennis wall, which I think will bring something artistic and wonderful to that area, now that we have a beautiful play area. Also, the Arts Council gave us a sneak preview on the, the first phase of the catalog, the art cataloging project is done. Art Tech has taken, has, has taken photos of all the public art in the city and collected all the information about how the city obtained it, who the artists are, all kinds of background information, and it's all in one place now. It's, it's searchable just by the staff at the moment, but at some point soon, hopefully, the public will be able to go on and look, and look at the art collection that the city has. It's more extensive than you would think. And...
The deer?
That's, oh, I don't really have an update on the deer, except that one deer is doing okay.
Still standing.
Still standing.
A little bit of run.
The other two, but I do know that the, there is, the warranty is still good on the deer, the two dead deer, or dying, dying deer. What will be expensive, however, will be transporting new deer, should the Arts Council decide to do that. I mean, if you have any thoughts about the deer, we discussed whether they should be located there, or perhaps moved to another place. The thought was that it might not be bad soil, but indeed poisoning or vandalism that caused the death, or the demise of the two. So, we don't know. The Arts Council had a lengthy discussion about whether they should be relocated someplace else. If we get new deer, would they be vandalized if we put them in the same place, or, or what? My personal feeling is the vandals win if we do that, and we need to get the word out and have some healthy outrage for people who would do something so dastardly to our topiary deer. So, I, I don't know what will happen, but I think we have until November to replace the deer with our, with the warranty. So...
They're such loved deer.
I know, and I saw somebody had used them, a photograph of them on a blog just recently. So, they're, they're loved.
So, there are dastardly deer deed doers out there.
There are.
Dan? Nothing. Tana?
Yeah, just want to say, of course, happy back-to-school day today. And I just, you know, it's impressive how I've seen so many people post things about their kids going back to school, and none of, nothing has been negative or anything. And that's just amazing how our school district organizes it all. And my son started middle school, and he wasn't even nervous, and he had a great day. So, I was very impressed. And I also just wanted to give a shout out to the Parks Department in particular, because the pedestrian bicycle path along Island Crest Way is fabulous, wide and even, and it's very exciting to see that from Island Crest, Island Park to 63rd. It's very exciting. So, that was really great. There are also a number of us at the thrift shop listening, tour, listening meetings, talking about the thrift shop expansion, and community members coming out, and I think we're gonna have a, an updated, better design because of those comments. So, I just want to thank people for attending those. And then again, at the Sound Cities Association meeting coming up in September, I will definitely make sure our fellow city elected leaders know about the EIS meetings and encourage them to come as well. So, thanks.
Mike?
Actually, it's been a month and a half since I think I've been here last. Good to be back.
Been a while for me, too.
Yes, it has been, hasn't it?
Yeah.
So, that's all I have.
Okay. He's back. He's bearded and he's back. Let's see, the only other one I have, I was to, also at the thrift store listening session. We, we would've had a quorum if we'd all talked about an issue, so we sort of steered clear of that, but it was, it was very nicely done and interesting to actually see on the ground what's going on there. I also attended, along with one or two other councilmembers, a school board listening session, which was interesting, and I think well-done. I certainly came away with the sense that the, in the audience seemed to be a lot of, a lot more support for this go-around than what we saw in the last go-around. So, I'm cautiously optimistic that they've got something that they're, they're gonna be moving forward with, and I think that's the talk at this point. So, that's all I've got. With that, unless there's anything else for the go-to boarder, Noel, you're okay? We are adjourned. Thank you all.